Have a handful of announcements and board openings this evening. Historic District Commission, two openings. One for a member of the Board of Realtors and an at-large community member. Conservation Commission, we have two openings. Housing Authority, we have one opening. Our Human Rights Commission, we have one opening from a housing authority member. Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee, five openings.
Should say, well, we have five openings, but we do find we have.
Okay, four more openings. We have an application, which is good.
Four.
Hamilton Council on Aging, we have two associate member openings. Hamilton Master Plan Committee, we have three additional members, which we should be filling tonight. Hamilton Finance and Advisory Committee, openings for two associate members. And at this time, we have time for public comment, three minutes on any topic not already on the agenda. If you are joining us on Zoom, which I really don't see anybody, you can raise your hand on Zoom. And if you're here, come right up to the podium and state your name and address us. Hi, Corinne.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving week. Corinne Gale, Town Clerk, also 36 Rock Maple Leaf. Just a quick election recap for folks. So the unofficial results were posted earlier. Our turnout was about 65.7%.
Wow.
Forty-two percent of that were the early voters, either in person or by mail. And 57%, or about 2,100, showed up on Election Day. It was very busy, but I think it was very smooth. So we had a, we had a really good day. We're a little busy right now because this main thing I want to make sure people are aware is that it looks like this there.
Virginia.
It looks like there will be a recount for the state representative race as of today, when some final overseas ballots were counted in Georgetown and Ipswich. I'm told the difference is 10. So there are a couple of other steps that will happen with the Secretary of State's office. We won't know, I don't know even what the right words are, but it will be November 30th, after the Governor's Council certifies the vote, that it becomes official. But we're all in, so all six communities will have to recount by hand every ballot. So it's a long haul, takes a lot of time. We're all in email communication already and doing as much planning as we can. I'm happy to report that I've already had seven local clerks step to the plate and say that they're going to come to help. I mean, that's usually what happens with recounts is clerks helping clerks because you want some people there who have experience and know what they're doing. So kudos to Beverly, Rockport, Haverhill, Nahont, Danvers, Merrimack, and Manchester. We'll have them on board. We will be down at the Rec Center. It's big. I'm hoping to have minimum eight tables set up, ideally 10 or 12, because the more people we have, the faster the count will go. Ballots get split up into packs of 50. You count them 50 at a time. So we'll have 75 packs of 50 ballots to hand count. So it'll be a pretty interesting experience. All right, I have sat and helped at other recounts, so even though we haven't had one in my time, both Ann and I went down to a fairly big one in Braintree, so we have some familiarity with it. So just wanted everybody to be aware of that. We'll keep you posted as it moves forward. But right now, we know that the recounts will have to happen the week of December 5th. So I'm targeting Tuesday, December 6th, down at the Rec Center. So I've already reserved that and spoken to Kim at the library as well to borrow some tables from her. So as usual, people have been phenomenally helpful and just stepping to the plate. So just wanted you to have that update.
And Corinne, just a quick question, I don't know if you addressed it or not, maybe I was in outer space at the moment. But have there's been any talk about, what's the word I'm looking for? This is going to cost us a little bit of money. Has the state said whether they'll be helping us cover that additional recount cost?
The state has made it clear they are not. But again, you know, I'm hoping costs will be minimal. Like when clerks come to help other clerks, it's not like we pay them. I mean, there is a tradition of like handing out like, you know, $10 Dunkin' gift cards or something. So I'll figure that out. But, you know, we don't have to pay that. And then, you know, some of the poll workers volunteer. So I'm going to try to keep the cost to a minimum. So, good question.
And this was who, what were the two, who were the two candidates that are?
Good question. So it's Kristin Kastner from Hamilton and Lenny Mira from Georgetown. Lenny is the incumbent because even though the district was redistricted, he is in Georgetown and he was part of that district before we got added to it, so.
Is there oversight of the recount from like our registrars or?
Well, good question. I met with the registrars today, yep. They are the ones who preside, is the actual verb. They preside over the recount. They were somewhat laughing because I, when I spoke to them originally about becoming registrars, I'm like, your main responsibility is recounts, but don't worry, those never happen.
Those will never happen.
So I jinxed myself and I jinxed them as well. But they were great. They were very enthusiastic, asked a lot of good questions. You know, I just gave them a heads up about what it'll entail. But yes, they'll, they'll definitely, definitely be there. And unfortunately, all three of them, plus myself, I'm the fourth registrar, will, will all be there. So that's good, too. Did you have another, was there a second part to that show on?
No.
No, that was it. Joe's asking a question about our, our next special guest that she's not here yet, but we'll, we'll make amends.
Anything else? Give me a holler if anybody has any questions. As I said, as it moves along, I'll keep you posted.
Yeah, I'm interested to see how it all works out.
So am I. Thanks.
Thanks, Corinne.
Thanks, Corinne.
All right, I think we're going to move on to our, well, let's do select board reports and we'll see if our Hamilton Foundation person comes in. Bill, anything to add tonight?
No, just wanted to thank Corinne for running a smooth professional election again. So nice job. It was the longest lines I've ever seen, so well coordinated.
Have we ever broken 65% before, to your knowledge?
2020.
2020, right. Anything from you, Tom?
Just comment on the, on last week, on the Gordon Conwell event at the Community House. Just thanks to Community House for hosting that. Really good turnout. There was like, what, like over 100 people that showed up there.
Hundred, yeah.
I know a few of us went. I think it was a really good event and a good opportunity to have some voices heard from the community about what to do with the Gordon Conwell property. But yeah, it was, yeah, a good event. And yeah, I was really surprised at the number of folks that were able to turn out. Jamie, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but I know you were there. We got a chance to, to share a table and share some ideas and it was, it was a great event.
Thank you, Tom.
Well said.
Caroline, anything from you?
No, nothing from me.
Jamie?
Yes. All right, folks, December 10th.
Ooh.
The Human Rights Commission is sponsoring, well, hosting with the help of the library, International Human Rights Day Celebration slash Event. So at the library, it's a Saturday morning, 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. I will repeat this when we're back for our next select board meeting, but that'll be just a couple days ahead of time. Hopefully, we can get some good public relations out there. But it's important, it's going to be family-friendly, so bring your kids. They're going to do some voting for where to place a tree in Hamilton. And there will be other things as well, but that's, that'll be one thing. We're going to have a couple of little voting booths or, join us.
Cool.
Or volunteer to help if you want.
Kick the first behind you. Here you go. Always works.
Mike, I can't be the only one, right?
Here you go.
Is that in my head?
At least there's heat, right.
There was not heat this morning. And we were popping breakers all over the place because the electrical system was trying to get the heat system revved up and keep up.
And it just kept firing it.
Kept firing, so we.
I would assume it's Corinne's speaker in the town clerk's office at Blaster Tunes, right? All right, let's see what I have to share. The Patent Park, Tom mentioned about the Gordon Conwell slash Town event at the Community House, talking about the future of the Gordon campus. I should say Gordon Conwell Campus, which is a good. Now, we're going to take all that kind of data back with our consultants and they'll kind of get it all together. And then we'll have another meeting and things will continue to develop with that. So, so far, so good. We're also going to be starting to work on a development agreement with Gordon Conwell, with the town to talk about what the possibilities could go there and what we do not want to go there, and then agree on that. We had a Patent Park Master Plan Meeting last week as well at the Council on Aging. Fairly good turnout. It'd be good to see a bit of a younger demographic, not to say that they're all old people there, but I'm an old person, too. But it'd be good to have some of the folks that really do use the park for the sports and et cetera involved in the process. But there'll be a few more of those meetings to, to see kind of a park envisioning plan for future improvements to the Patent Park. We had a meeting this afternoon with the superintendent, school committee representatives, FinCom representatives from both towns, let's see, financial directors of both towns, town manager, town administrator, myself, and the Wenham Select Board Chair, kind of the first blush of the school budget. And I think Eric Tracy's doing a great job. We had a good discussion today. We're going to have another meeting coming up and then we'll have a meeting, is it Wednesday next week?
Wednesday, November 30th, yep.
So Wednesday next week is the first kind of rollout to all the boards and committees. Mark your calendars. That's at 6:30 at the Bessie Buker School Cafeteria. And then after that, we kind of roll through our budget process and theirs. And then we meet again in January to finalize things. Let's see, what else? Master Plan Steering Committee, we're going to kick off reboot, reinvigoration of that group on Monday night, the 28th. And hopefully, in a little bit, we'll approve three new members to that committee. Also, tonight, on our consent agenda, is the final iteration of the Historic Preservation Restriction Agreement for the First Congressional Church with the CPC and the Massachusetts, Lori, I'm going to get it wrong, Historical Commission. We have, this is, I put this on the consent agenda because we've seen this before for the most part. It's kind of minor language changes that the Mass Historical wanted in there. We haven't really changed anything on our end, but it was in the packet. So hopefully, if you were interested, you read it. And I think, I think that's all I have, if I have.
How was the Veterans Breakfast?
Oh, the Veterans Breakfast was good as usual. We didn't have as big of a turnout at the cemetery, but I think Wenham had something going on. There's a lot of folks at the Wenham Ceremony, so we'll, we'll see how it comes around. Every once in a while, we talk about some way to combine parades and events and stuff like that. It always seems to go about 85% and then stall. So maybe someone can reorganize that initiative, because I think it would be good because less and less people are joining the armed services and we have less and less veterans. It's important to recognize them and, and do what we can for them. So I think combining may be a, a good option, but there's politics as well involved, so. Anything else that I missed? You can add to it, town manager report, Joe?
The town manager report will hopefully be out by Wednesday this week. The department heads were working on it. We have to update my sections as well. I was away last Thursday and Friday for the Mass Municipal Managers Association Meeting and Amherst Annual Conference. And it was good. We had a good, we had good seminars on climate change and resiliency, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and digital engagement with our communities. So those are great things that I was able to take notes on and try to learn something about to bring back to Hamilton. But that did take away from my time to kind of get that report ready for you today. So we hope that'll be out Wednesday in advance of Thanksgiving this week instead of on Friday, as per usual. And that's the chest of what I've got for right now.
All right.
I think our scheduled visitor is unable to attend.
Okay.
So we may want to.
Well, we can push that to our, our next beginning then. All right, so we were supposed to have a report from, and I'll, I'll just mention it here since it's on the agenda. Heather Ford from the Hamilton Foundation is a great organization in town. And when she or another member of that group comes in, they'll give their kind of annual pitch. But I'll give it a little bit now. The Hamilton Foundation is a great organization that kind of connects people in need with money to pay different things, rent, utility bills, food, diapers, et cetera, for folks in town that are in a little bit of need during the holiday season or just really anytime during the year. So hopefully Heather will come in our next meeting and talk to that. Important to give to that. I think there's information on our website about that, Lori, so people can connect there as well. But I'll let Heather give the bulk of the information next time.
Important for people to know that that is all fundraised, that is not money from the town.
Right, correct.
Hamilton Foundation's an independent organization, so this is their kind of time of year to do fundraising so that they can have money to respond to the needs of people in the community, so.
Perfect, thanks, Joe. All right, on to the consent agenda. We have approved minutes of October 3rd, 2022, select board meeting. Approved minutes of October 18th, 2022, select board meeting. And then approved Historic Preservation Restriction Agreement for First Congressional. Anybody want to make a motion?
Moved.
So moved, second by anybody?
Second.
Second by Caroline? Any discussion? No? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, thank you. All right, on to our agenda. We have two items right up top that I'm going to postpone as, and I'll just read them out here. We have the Fiscal Year '23 Tax Classification Hearing with the Assessor Todd Laramie. And we have the Fiscal Year '23 Chapter 91 Senior Exemption Program Limits with Assessor Todd Laramie. And we are tabling this for tonight, or postponing it because I really can't table it. But if somebody else wants to table it, they're more than welcome to. Caroline tabled it, thank you. And we basically, we're a little bit early on this. The state didn't get things together for us, so we're waiting until the state has all their ducks in a row and we can give you the real numbers on all this stuff. I'm sure you're okay with that. All right, up next, we have discussion of parking regulations for the downtown district with Mr. Patrick Refit, our Planning and Inspections Director. Welcome, Patrick, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. As the Hamilton Development Corporation brought forward the 59 Willow Project a number of years ago for permitted, there was a great deal of public concern, particularly from residents in downtown, over parking conditions in town, downtown. And a great deal of fear and trepidation about that project and what it might mean to on-street parking. I know a lot of residents in that immediate area were very concerned. And we, the town and the HDC, working together, found some funds. We hired a parking consultant to evaluate downtown. We have a, a map here, which is, we set the study area basically at Union Street to the west, Asbury to the north, let's see, Linden to the south, and the edge of the Commercial District, plus some other residential property to the north there, just above that. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at areas where events and other kinds of activities would bring a lot of parking in downtown and make sure that we had the ability to understand it, number one, but to the best we could find out and to address how to handle it. As we had the consultant evaluate the area, we, we set a, a group to work with me. It was an ad hoc group. We had a number of folks. Some were HDC members, a number were just concerned citizens. Some of the residents near to that 59 Willow Project were engaged and involved. I have to thank Peter Cobb from DPW for engaging as part of it. I especially have to thank Scott Janes. He's been very helpful throughout the process. I should have said that we started this in late 2020. That was right during the COVID period. And there was a lot of concern that, okay, you're doing this during a period where we don't have a lot of people downtown. So we had the consultant to look at a number of existing aerial photographs of downtown successive years. In fact, that illustrated that we had a, a good full understanding of where parking took place, what problems were, and how far people typically were walking. One interesting thing that we did find is that, yeah, we, we have way more parking than really what we need, which most communities don't. So that was a, you know, terrific, you know, fact to have found. We have either official or unofficial parking of almost 2,000 spaces. If you look within that study area, yes, we do have a couple of major parking lots, the MBTA lot as well as the Crossroads Shopping Center parking lot. They, I think, you know, they're focused on their own parking needs. And from what I can tell, and I have observed a fair amount of parking behavior in both of those locations, people don't typically park there to go to anything other than the shopping center or the T. So I think that, you know, by and large, we do have a good supply of parking. What we really found that was highly apparent was the fact that we have all kinds of signage all over town that it may or may not have come to the select board through time for approvals. So we need to sort of backtrack and deal with that. We, as you look at that parking signage around town, some of them are so sunburnt from being, yeah, in downtown for years and years and years, you can't even read them anymore, which has created a situation where we confuse ourselves, we confuse the users. And what we really want to be able to do is create a plan so people understand where to reasonably park. And then if enforcement is necessary, the police department has the ability to enforce. So that's really the, you know, behind, you know, our need and desire to find whether or not we were unnecessarily and unduly impacted 59 Willow. We really wanted to understand what parking was in downtown because it, it probably has never been done before. So one of the things you learn as a planning director is you get a lot of these sort of neither fish nor fowl projects. But, yeah, it's an important project that, you know, I'm happy that we've, we have good positive findings. The biggest effort we need to now undertake is appropriately regulating and appropriately signing after that. So a lot of what you see on the street right now is exactly what we'll continue to do. We do want to make some changes, though. We will keep the same, or we're proposing to keep the same two-hour parking along Railroad as well as along Bay Road where there is existing parking, parallel parking. Let's see, we also want to propose to the board that we utilize Willow Street on this Easterly side as four-hour parking all the way up and down, all the way up to 281 Willow. That's the point, just, just a little bit above the Palazzola Building. Because there's a lot of trucking up in that location, we're proposing to eliminate it on that side, the Easterly side, and then flip five spaces on the Westerly side. So the, the automotive repair operations up there have the ability to use them for four hours at a time during the day. We don't want to see overnight parking. We want to get them away from the intersections so pedestrians have the ability to see and be seen. And that's not always the case as it is right now. So what we want to be able to do, like I say, is to have four-hour parking on Willow from Linden all the way up to 281 Willow. And then eliminate it from there northerly, but then allow it on the opposite side for five spaces near Asbury. We also want to make sure that we're marking sidewalks in a way that people understand you can't park on top of these things. That's been an issue for a lot of the users and certainly a lot of our pedestrians over time. So, you know, this is part of maintaining any system, you have to upgrade it over time. What I would like to do at the next time I'm before the board is have you approve the regulations. That I did have Koppelman look at, there are some language kinds of things that I want to reconcile, what they're telling me with what our consultant told me, and match that with the proposals that I've made to you tonight relative to what hours and what location. Once we approve it, we're going to need to post it locally for at least a week. So that has that enabling as per Mass General law. So there's some process that goes along with it, but I appreciate your interest and your help in advancing it. Questions?
I had, I had two, but if you go back to the map right there, up the front.
I can just go all the way back to it, sure.
Sorry. The one thing I was surprised by is maybe my own lack of knowledge, but the parking between Talbot's and the liquor store is two-hour public parking? I did not realize that. That lot is right at the end of Railroad, the other side, by Talbot's, that's public parking, huh?
I believe that is, yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised by that.
Yeah.
I thought that was owned by them.
They have signs on the backside specifically for Talbot's employees. And I think that's because it's public that they have to make sure there's employee parking for Talbot's.
Interesting. And then the sign, I think, I think, I think then there's.
The irony is if it's public parking.
Right.
They're putting signs there saying that.
I mean, it's always empty at night. I mean, the roads, the road gets packed for, you know, for the post, but that parking lot is always empty. I don't think people realize that it's.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
People don't realize that it's, so signage will help.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think signage is a big part. I think whatever we pick for signage needs to be welcoming, town-oriented signage and not a bunch of no parking signs, but park here signs. I mean, we have to think about, I think the signage is important, but it's also important what it looks like and how friendly it is and welcoming it is. So we don't want to just put a bunch of typical signs up. So I think that's a big part of the process. But no, this is good. We've talked about this a long time. I'm glad to see that it's been done and, and I think this makes a lot of sense.
To your point, we tried to look at this as an economic development assistance to downtown, too. We haven't exactly been welcoming with our, our signage. So I think, you know, this is a, a good opportunity to do it in a way that's clean and clear and followable for anybody that wants to come in patronize our, our local businesses.
Right, and now, like you said, in downtown often, and some of the signs are just, it's a rusty rectangle. You know, you can't really even see what it says, so, you know. I think there'll be some growing pains, I'm sure, with the signage, but I think.
But I think, you know, on Willow Street, especially at that end by Asbury, is always choked with the cars from the lots there getting repaired. And sometimes it's really tough to see around those, and you got kids and all kinds of people coming in and out of that intersection. Yeah, what was the other thing I was gonna say? I forget. Anybody else have any comments for Patrick or questions?
Is that a pre-comment breath? Okay.
Who's my Caroline pause?
Well, some, I just, I don't want to, I don't want to step in front of you. Go. I heard the breath.
So, the 2,000 spots, does that include the MBTA and Hamilton Shopping Center?
Yes, it does. On the positive side, you know, even aside from those two lots, you know, the police department, and particularly Scott, tells me that unless we have multiple events happening at the same time, we just don't have a problem.
I mean, people don't do a lot of parking on Willow Street on a regular day.
Right.
Regular day.
Right.
There is, there is from time to time, people that don't, that don't want to pay the commuter lot fee, and they'll park somewhere else downtown.
And I heard an example today. If you're going in to get a tooth drilled, that two hours is not going to cut it. And there's several dentists there on Railroad.
Yeah, we see it where Willow and Railroad hit, where you cross over, there are cars that are there all day on that side. And it technically is two-hour between eight and six, I think. But I also know that some of them are the cars of the business owners. So, I wonder how that goes. And then I have a very random question about the unregulated spaces. The only issue we have is that people don't know whether to park on the street or park in our lawns, which begs the question, how much of the lawn is technically-
An easement for the town.
An easement for the town? Because if you park off someone's lawn, you're too far into those narrow streets for there to be two-way traffic. But it's not, like, we have people who park fully on our lawn, and I just didn't know, like-
Most people in my neighborhood park over the sidewalk, because if you're parking-
We don't have sidewalks.
In the street, right.
Yeah.
You don't have the sidewalks on your street either. So, if you're parking two cars on either side of the street, it's a one lane.
Yeah, yeah, it's a single lane. So, I just wondered, like, is there, what percentage of our lawns are people supposed to be parking on?
None. I would say none.
It depends on the street, depends on the right-of-way width.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry to give you a governmental-
No, no, no. You know, we just, during, I think, it's funny when I look at this, because I was like, parking's ever my question. It was during the Willow Street construction, you know, our streets were lined with the vehicles for the construction, but they were three and a half feet into everybody's lawns. And I think that was, but it was better actually than them being in the street, because then no one could pass. It was kind of like-
Half a dozen ones.
Yeah, what, what is the actual rule about it? I have no idea.
Right, we need that rock garden, that'll deter that.
Giant boulders. Yeah.
And I would assume you have gotten, or will be getting some input from our kind of local merchants, HGC folks, on pushback or accolades on some of this.
They've been very supportive. I have made sure that, you know, they were part of that committee. They've had the benefit of this report, you know, for a couple of years now. But, you know, I'd like to give them the benefit of, you know, understanding that, you know, we're about to take this forward and get this-
And I think when we, when we do move it forward, it'd be good to get their help, kind of spreading the word since they're going to be once downtown, and maybe put some signs up in their businesses, and we have that kind of period of public notification.
Yeah, good.
So.
So, the four hour, so, right now it's 30-minute, you're going to get rid of the 30-minute, it sounds like. It's going to be two-hour or four-hour, correct?
There's one space, and I'm glad you brought that up, one space in front of an auto body near Asbury. It's just to the south of John's Auto. It's the auto body repair. He will have an auto in just sporadically during the course of the day. So, that's the only 30-minute parking that we would have.
And is there a four-hour, I didn't see a four-hour drawing in here. Is that something you're working on, a four-hour drawing?
Yeah, well, the four hours would be along Willow Street from Linden all the way up to 281 Willow.
Both sides?
No, just on the one side. Willow wouldn't be big enough for us to, you know, consume 10 feet on this side, 10 feet on the Easterly side, and then have 12 feet lanes in both directions. Just, we can only do it on one side.
And then where it says unregulated, where we say unregulated, that means the study doesn't go into those areas, or we're really not going to regulate those areas? What does that actually mean when it says unregulated?
That means that it isn't used, or it isn't signed right now for parking, and we don't intend to.
Well, I would argue that both Railroad Avenue beyond Willow, which says unregulated, actually has signs that says no parking either side.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
And, you know, that has been the case, I'm told, because there's a bit of, and still is a fair amount of MBTA parking, like a half a dozen to eight or 10 sometimes.
They park way up there, huh?
Yeah.
There's always cars parked either side, where it says no parking either side. So, I don't know.
Yeah, they park right there, no matter what.
What is the, what is the actual enforcement of these four-hour and three-hour? Is it just our local law enforcement that are monitoring it, or is there any sort of-
Not much enforcement now because the signage is all over the place. But this would spur some enforcement.
This will initiate it.
Right. And with many things, like when you change a speed limit or traffic, something, it takes a little while for people to get used to it, so it'll be a little bit front-end loaded. But then hopefully after a while, it will be a little easier to manage.
Yeah, makes sense. And one other question, I know there's a lot of handicap spots baked into some of this public off-street, but what is, is there like a certain percentage of handicap spots that we need to have, like locally, or, or is, how is that measured, you know, when you look at handicap spots in around the areas?
You look at that per each business-
Okay.
And how many square footage and what type of business that happens to be. We only have three in downtown, I'm told. And we need to, we need to exert some energy and find some locations for some. We also need to make sure that we can find them and locate them in locations that are convenient and workable. That's not always easy, but we need to do that for sure.
Yeah, I think they're, I don't think they're represented correctly on the map, but I figured you guys would do that later, but they show only two, but there's more than-
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some that are actually like in like the public, you know, the Crossby's marketplace that are like baked in there, but, yeah, I'm only seeing the two on-
There's one like in the middle by the pizza shop.
Yeah.
That doesn't show. Then there's one in the Talbets.
And then by the, in the Accord Lot, I think there's one or two in there.
There's two, I think, in the Accord.
But, so there's more that are shown. But yeah, that's a good question, should we add more?
And there are some, accessibility is important. I think we want to make sure that we're-
We want to promote people coming downtown. So, I'm not sure if they did a study on how often those were used or not as part of this. Did they separately-
I don't think they did, no.
Yeah. I think there's some in the lot of Patton Park, and there's some in the lot of COA as well.
Yeah. Yeah. And I don't think there's any in the Talbets Liquor Store Lot. I think there is one there. Is there?
Yeah.
Isn't there parking behind the stores?
There is parking behind the stores, and what's important to note on that parking is that it's rarely used.
That's what I mean.
And what's also important is that that parking had to be created as part of their original approvals. When they went to the Zonin Board of Appeals years and years ago to get their original site plan and special permit approval there, the ZBA required that they have all of that additional parking in the rear there. It's virtually never used. And the consultant did recommend that, you know, we engage List Go Development to make those spaces available. I have spoken with their day-to-day manager, Linda Miggs, and she says, yeah, until the ZBA is willing to change their permit, they have to maintain those spaces as they are right now. But I do think that, you know, it would be one of those kinds of things, if we needed it and it was important for downtown, it'd be worth going after and, you know, revisiting their permit. It'd take a use analyses of the rest of their property to make sure that, you know, a new arrangement wasn't damaging their demand, because their parking lot there in the front's used pretty-
Yeah.
Yeah, heavily during the course of the day and the evening, especially weekends, too.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? All right.
So, Patrick, what do you want from the board tonight?
You know, tonight, I'd like to at least get your concurrence on the parking plan itself. Not a final approval. I need to come back to you with those rewritten regulations that reconcile the consultant and council's terminology. But, you know, I'd just like to have an approval of the plan itself.
So, I would entertain the motion to approve the proposed parking plan as seen tonight in charge, Patrick, to work with whatever designees he feels fit to continue on and come back to us with signage and any alterations.
Some moved?
Second.
Second. Jamie, you gonna say something?
I guess it's unclear to me exactly what I'm voting on, and is it, like, is a vote now necessary beyond, I mean, if it's sort of like a, kind of like a straw vote, like, yeah, you're going the right direction, I guess?
Mainly.
Is that-
Mainly, yeah. I mean, it's not carved in stone, because we still have to figure a little bit of the details.
The regulation that was offered by the consultant was reviewed by town council, and he made several, you know, legal use challenges. We need to make sure that we can reconcile the legal use with the language that the consultant offered. And that will actually need a vote of you, because that will make it parking by law in town that will then be enforceable by the police department.
What you're really approving is that the concept here of amending the parking consistent with what the consultant advised in 2020 is what we should pursue with that regulation. And then we'll bring the regulation back for your vote in-
Right.
Hopefully, a month or so.
Right. This plan allows me to follow it up with that harder text, Jamie, that the board will also vote. That would be the, the legal part that we'd have to advertise as well.
You comfortable with that, or do you want to amend the motion?
Comfortable.
Okay. Any other further discussion?
Right, I mean, I'm trying to think, like, we're, like, we did a parking study-
Yeah.
But the parking study doesn't have a plan, per se. It's going to have a regulation. And I kind of, like, these plans are good plans, but it would be nice to have, like, an engineering plan. And I'm going to say I don't want to spend money on something, but it'd be nice to actually know how many spots there are on this street, and how many are handicap, how many are two-hour, how many are four-hour, like a quantity. Right now, we have a general diagram. Just don't know how to get from a diagram to more, more of an engineering plan.
We have a lot of that data that Bill's talking about from when we did the plan. And I haven't read through this whole, I'm assuming this is what I was involved in two years ago. This is pretty much just the same thing repeated. I mean, I skimmed through it, but it does have all the information about parking spaces and stuff like that in it, if you read the whole thing. It kind of breaks it down per, per area.
In terms of like this, the number of spaces, that'd be dictated by the length of the street and, you know, curb cuts and things like that. So, we could, we could have DPW and police make recommendations about how many spaces are on Railroad Ave, how many spaces are on Willow, and then we could even stripe those once we have the, once we have a regulation that's confirmed by you.
Yeah, but it's like, okay, like, per-
Yeah, you want like, also like-
Per street or something, I don't know. I mean, right, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to understand, like, is the end result to come up with regulations, is the end result actually do physical work, stripe the spots, number them, name them, like, it's like, how far are we taking, how far are we taking-
I think it's a combination a little bit.
So, if you go, it's page, I was looking at the same thing. It looks like page 28 in the packet is where it actually gives the-
The breakdowns.
The breakdowns?
Yeah.
Or is that, I can't tell what is conditions update on street regulations as follows, two-hour parking on both sides of Railroad Ave, between Bay and Willow.
Right. See, these are the recommendations from the, from the consultant.
Which are reflected in that map.
Correct.
Right.
And so, kind of, I think what Bill might be getting at, what we need to do is kind of really look at the recommendations, and then DPW or whoever, and maybe Scott, go and look at the spaces and see what can fit where. Is that what you're kind of talking about?
I'm saying, like, I'm in favor of the regulation. I think it's great, and the study's great, but the next step would be sort of, what are we actually, now that we've, now that we're like, what does the regulation get us?
Right, right. And I don't know how many, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, we've already have marked spaces on Railroad Ave. I couldn't see us marking much more than that, other than signage.
Right. It'd be, Railroad would be the same.
Right.
Railroad would be the same. We'd probably try to stripe the westward side of, we're talking about the west-
Willow, if we do that.
The east side of Willow.
The east side of Willow, away from the curb?
The east side of Willow, which is closer to the commercial district and away from the residential and the opposite.
Non-sidewalk side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and so we can probably stripe that and put signage on it to, to support that as well. And that would be part of-
Right.
Once, once we had the, a regulation that we could-
Right.
Support, we can, in the budget, find the money to stripe and sign.
And I think the bulk of it's going to be just updating our signage, you know, so it's-
Consistent, friendly.
Well, and tied to a bylaw. We won't introduce that parking bylaw because it doesn't, it's, a lot of it's there without being tied to a regulation, so it's not supportable.
And in the event that the police department has issues with people who are abusing it, they have the ability to enforce.
Any other questions?
No, I mean, I agree, we have enough parking. I think we just need to better market it, so, good.
Caroline, you've got a question, look on your face.
So, we're just voting to just go to the next step?
Yes, correct.
Why do we need to vote on that?
So, we're just charging Patrick to move ahead with it. We don't have to, we can-
No, I just-
Patrick wants you to say, you said, keep going.
Yeah.
It's in the meeting minutes.
Okay, cool. Woo!
It's a straw, it's a straw vote.
All right. Any further discussion on our motion slash straw vote? I guess it's a real motion if it's not a straw vote, but anyway. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, Patrick, thank you very much.
Thank you much.
All right. We have some late-breaking news. We have Heather Ford has joined us. Heather, come on up and talk about the wonderful Hamilton Foundation.
Well, I'll probably be your least controversial piece of the night. And I'm so sorry I'm-
Oh, that's okay.
Lori did tell me, and I just gave it to you. My apologies and thank you from your delts. So, some of you may be listening, or may be in this room, don't know what the Hamilton Foundation is, so just, I thought the brochure would be helpful. We've been an organization here in the town since 2005, so 17 years, which is quite surprising. We help approximately 20 families a year directly with funding, and then we probably touch another 15 to 20 that we steer to other locations because their needs are different than what we can provide. We do short-term relief for people that have had usually an unexpected event in their life, that they just can't meet their bills all of a sudden, and they come through us. Everything is very confidential. There's no discussion with anybody other than really just our angel, which, our coordinator, which is Jane Wetson, and then we have four board members. We are only informed by codes that she puts with them. We're not even aware of the family names, so it doesn't get out into the community. So, there should be none of that, you know, reticence to get, to get, to ask for help if you need it. It is interesting to me, over the 17 years, we used to have a lot more families and children. In the last four or five years, we've had a lot more elderly, which they were kind of a reluctant group for a long time, and now, I don't know, the population has changed, their circumstances have changed, and so we have a lot more elderly that we're helping, which, which is interesting. We do an annual appeal once a year. It's in your w- We do an annual appeal once a year. It's in your water bills. You probably have seen it. That water bill flyer is paid for entirely by a donor. The town does not pay for it. We also, the best part about the Hamilton Foundation is that we don't take any tax dollars, so we, you don't have to vote on us. We have no budget impacts and all of our funds are come, come from the generosity of the Hamilton residents. So it's kind of a in and out every year. We're about, what we take in is about what we give out. We have, you know, within reason, there's, you usually have a little bit extra. We also have people who donate, instead of just donating money, they will give us gift cards, which we are then able to pass out to families to meet a short-term need that they might have. I did want to say that we are down a single board member. We had a death on one of our board members, and so it would be lovely if somebody in the community was interested in, in serving on the board. So that's sort of my only ask, I guess, that's, that's out there, unless anybody has any questions. This is our time of year, as you know, when out on the waterboard, and this is when, between November and about April is sort of our big season, when we tend to get a lot of heating requests, probably a lot this year with prices gonna go crazy, a lot of utilities. And a lot of people that donate to us are very specific that they want their money to go to utilities. So we're very careful about where, where the money goes and how we distribute it. You know, we're, we take a look at what somebody's needs are and just make sure that we're adhering to, to sort of real needs as opposed to wants.
Any questions for Heather?
No, this is, this is really great. Thanks for sharing. I did have a question. I see there's some available resources on the back and I think you hit on some of the state agencies and things like that. Is there any sort of like counseling services that you offer that kind of help people get other, other aids, such as like state aid, like, you know, Department of Transitional Assistance, or like childcare subsidies, things like that? Is there a way for, to connect them with other services as well?
We have four or five, what I would call auxiliary friends, people in the community that have, you know, that are lawyers or counselors or things that volunteer. So when we find a case like that, we, we just refer them directly to them and then they walk through that component of it.
That's great.
So that's, because it's, we're just regular citizens. We are not gonna be able to help on some of those, some of those items. This brochure was printed by the prisoners and so it didn't cost us any money to do it. So it's, it gets to be, we're about two years into it now, so it, some of these are a little bit out of date. So we always ask if somebody's looking and they can't find it, that they call us directly. We have a phone number that's in the brochure, which we guard with our life because Google, as you know, moves in and out of things. So we have to be careful because I would not want to have to reprint this whole brochure because our phone number had gone away. So, yes, that's how we do. We have, so we have some lovely auxiliary people in the community that are willing to step forward when we have a need, you know, that have worked with Habitat for Humanity, attorneys, those kinds of people will step forward when we have, when we find something unusual.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Other than just a huge thank you, Heather, for what you and the group does for our citizens and it's, it's been, how many years?
Seventeen. I was, I was adding it up as I was walking here. I'm like, oh, wow.
All the great things you've done over the years.
And on the town meeting floor, they said, Heather, we will approve this, but you can never take in town taxes.
Yeah.
So we've tried to adhere to that. We don't take in any town money, so we've been able to sustain ourselves in and out. And every dollar that comes in goes back out again. So things like the brochures and the water flyers and things come from a single donors. They don't come out of our, out of our coffers.
And if you need more information, you go to the Hamilton Town website.
Yes, we have a lovely website and this brochure is uploaded on, on it courtesy of Lori.
Yep. And you can send your checks to the Hamilton Foundation Care of Town Hall, P O Box 429, 577 Bay Road in Hamilton.
And we also, you can, if you go to the website, there's an electronic.
There's a link there, right?
There's an electronic link there as well, which last year, it was interesting. The first year, hardly anybody used it. Last year, about a third of our donations came in through that. So, so a lot of people prefer to do that than to actually write a check.
That's good.
So it's, we're very grateful to have that piece as well.
All right.
Heather bothered me for a couple of years about, hey, we need to get this up.
No, Joe, I wasn't gonna go after you like that.
Well, I, I was thinking the same thing. I think I've said it the last couple of times you've come, that we should have some kind of a pay thing on the website would really help, be helpful, so.
So it's been a couple of years now and it is, it is a lovely thing. It comes every Monday. I can see it. I can upload it because I, we send everybody a thank you note who donates, so, just so we can complete the circle because we're a community, right? People are donating to people that live in the community, so we want, we want to keep that connection going. So, so it's not very nice, actually.
Perfect.
I didn't feel like Heather was calling. I didn't feel like I was going at myself as in, I was just happy that we finally got there.
Well, I appreciate it very much.
We were trying, it just took.
You made it, you made it happen, things I don't understand, the inner workings of all that stuff, so I'm very.
Took longer than we wanted to, but we finally got it on.
Yeah. No, I was very appreciative of it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Heather.
Bye, guys. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks for coming at late notice.
Happy Thanksgiving.
No, it was just totally my error. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Take care. All right. Up next, we have approval of new members to the Master Plan Steering Committee. We have three applications, one a little late breaking. We have some of them are gonna join us tonight if they were, but I don't see them online. But we have three applications, one from Ted Acworth, one from Greg Keller, and one from Bill Wilson, former select board member, a member of the Capitol Committee at the moment. Anybody want to make a motion or discuss or talk about any of the potential appointees? And this is for our Master Plan Steering Committee, which is rebooting on Monday, the 28th, as I mentioned earlier.
I'll make a motion, but make a motion of, what are the names again? Make a motion to approve the following members to the.
Bill Wilson.
To the.
Ted Acworth.
Bill Wilson, Ted Acworth, and Greg Keller.
All right.
Master Plan Steering Committee.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion about the candidates? I'm sure some of you know some of them.
I've worked with them all and they're all very qualified in this realm. I know the town well.
All right. Pending no further comments or discussion, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye's habit. Thank you, you three folks, if you're listening somehow at home.
If they're listening at home, Lori Wilson will be in touch with them to help get them, in the case of Ted and Greg, town email accounts to conduct the town business on. Bill Wilson already has one from his work in the Capitol Committee, so.
Yes, he also has a meeting on the 28th with the Capitol Committee.
Okay.
Uh-oh.
Double booked him.
Okay.
All right. Next, we have a discussion of chaplain option to buy 15 Sagamore Farm Road. We have Mr. Bohini with us tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's kind of hard to follow up on Heather Ford and all her good work. I'll try to be quick with you here tonight. I represent Margot Killarney. She's the owner of 15 Sagamore Road. It is a residential property, just a little bit north of Town Hall here. She, or on her behalf, we notified the town of her intent to sell Tuono Butter. Her property's been in 61A since 2006. So pursuant to the chapter, she would have to wait 120 days or you would have 120 days to purchase it. We're here tonight to ask you to waive the 120 days so that she can go ahead and sell the property. I did send a notice on November 1st that has much more details in it. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on it tonight, but the request is to waive the 120-day option period.
So I'll let people stare at their computers for a second here.
I'm looking at it.
And ask if there's any questions for Mr. Heaney on this property.
What, Chair, what do you, have you gone through this before? What do you recommend we should discuss?
Well, I kind of, I think we should honor Mr. Heaney's request as I, and we can discuss it, you know, right now if we want to, or we probably should, whether we have any interest in the property. I personally don't think we do, but there's four other opinions here.
It may help if I give you a little more description.
Give us a little color on it. I think Mr. Demelowitz wants to also add a little color.
So the, the property's 10 and a half acres. It is a single-family property. It's a horse barn now. They are completely surrounded by other residential properties on their private road and on Gardner Street. And to access to this property is over a private road, so it really has some, some limitations. I'd be hard pressed to think of any municipal use for this property, which is why I was a little bit brief in my initial introduction. But if, if you were to take a ride out there or to look at the letter we sent you, I think it's Exhibit E, has the town assessor's map, which shows the surrounding properties. It, it's a beautiful property, but it is really kind of limited in use. The purchaser of it isn't a butter who is looking to purchase it mainly just to protect his own property. He's not, to the best of my knowledge, from speaking to his attorney today, he's not looking to develop it or do anything like that. It's purely a, it's just protect his property from anything else coming in there that he can't control. So for the town, it will probably stay very similar to as it is now, if this purchase is allowed to go through. If the town wanted to exercise their purchase, again, I'd be hard pressed to think of any municipal use that, that would be of any value, just, just due to the nature of the property and the access.
We can ask, but I don't know that they have to promise that.
Yeah, I don't think they need to say.
My, my understanding is, my understanding is that the intent of the new owner isn't to refile in chapter one, chapter 61, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't change their mind. We can't hold them to that.
Right. Did anyone catch that side conversation I was just having with our town manager?
Did.
I was just asking, since the land is being pulled out of chapter, that if the new owners would be putting it back in the chapter after purchase? You wouldn't. Okay. There you go.
That's, that's helpful. Thanks. Yeah, we got that.
We got that.
I'd say that in addition to making an assessment of whether or not the town would find a use for it, which I, I agree with Mr. Heaney, given that its location is off of a private way.
Right.
The town would, if we want to pursue public use of that property, we'd need to upgrade that, that way and make it a public way. There'd be expense and time and effort in that, and it would also be expensive because this would just be an option. You would still have to come up with the sale price, which I don't recommend at this time.
So, questions, comments, discussion?
Is there any reason that we wouldn't waive the 120 days?
I mean, there is, but.
Like, but meaningful and.
No.
Worth consideration?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I don't, I don't see us purchasing this property for that price and, and being able to do anything with it that would benefit the greater good here for the community.
Great.
So.
Does the planning board look at it all, weigh in? If you wanted to announce that, but I don't think that's a conflict for you.
I don't believe so. Joe, do you know if the planning board is?
I do not believe the planning board has looked at it. I, you know, don't think they've had a meeting such a good.
Got the notice.
Got the notice. But the planning board isn't required to.
Yeah.
This is a select board decision to act on the.
I would assume if they did weigh in, they're gonna come to the same conclusion we're gonna come to in about a minute and a half here, probably.
Yeah, I know we sometimes get their opinion on this, so I was curious. That happened most recently in the last time this came up and that was offered by the planning board. It wasn't sought. But, but just to clarify. Makes sense.
All right. Any other?
Listen for me.
Is it two separate motions or one motion? A motion to waive and a motion not to purchase? Or is it all wrapped up?
I think you make one motion with both actions in it.
I think you could wrap it into one.
Well, good luck with whoever does that motion.
I was just staring at you. Anybody want to try and perform that motion? Or maybe Mr. Heaney could suggest some verbiage that would help him out?
The, the motion that would be brought before the board would be to waive the option to purchase the property at 15 Sagamore Farm Road and to waive the 120-day option period.
So moved.
All right. Second by anybody?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All right. Any further discussion?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
But for personal reasons, but just don't want to be a conflict of interest.
Yep. Fair enough. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And thank you for coming.
Good luck. Good luck with the, with the new.
Yeah.
I'm happy for you guys.
Enjoy. All right. We have up next, approval of perpetual care fund expenditure for cemetery. Discuss and vote.
So this was tabled from the last meeting. There was some questions and a little bit of discussion about this request. In the interim, the Public Works Director has got back with some short email about kind of explaining the benefit of using the proposed piece of equipment. He's also on the Zoom and available to take any questions if you'd like. The long and the short of it is that we know that, you know, there's questions about, you know, leaf blowers in the, in these public space, et cetera, but we also realize that we are expected to keep the cemetery in a certain condition. We currently use multiple leaf blowers and many staff to manage that leaf removal process in the cemetery. We don't do this in our parks. We let the, we leave the leaves and mulch them in place. Cemetery's treated differently intentionally, and this is kind of viewed as a better way, a more efficient way to accomplish that goal, free up staff time, reduce a little bit, make it more efficient, reduce the cost of that process a bit. The main reason this is before you is because it's a use of perpetual care fund expenditure. Otherwise, we would just use from the regular budget and we wouldn't need your approval. Tim is here if anybody has any other questions.
Questions by anybody? Do we want to hear anything from Tim or did Joe give a good coloring of the?
I heard that we were going to do it no matter what speech, so, got it.
I regret that you took it that way.
No, I mean.
It's not really what I, what I intended to convey. I think that the, the fact is we're expected to clean the leaves out of the, out of the cemetery. It's, we do it now. I think the way we're doing it now is more disruptive. The one piece of machinery that can basically halve the amount of time that we're doing it is more efficient for us, but also less disruptive to the environment, in our view. So we're hoping that we can use the cemetery funds to pay for the cemetery expense.
Tim, do you want to add anything to that?
Nope. Just, I, I agree with what Joe was saying. I mean, my job, part of my responsibility is to improve efficiency where I can in the department and reduce staff hours if I can as well. So this handles both, in my opinion.
All right. Any discussion here?
Yeah. I mean.
All right.
I don't know. I, I mean, it just, it strikes me that we did the town, you know, we did pass the town meeting, the climate thing and where we're supposed to take all these things into consideration. I think it was actually something just like this or similar to this that I thought, you know, that stuff like this is gonna come up. But I guess this has the added feature that, you know, leaf blowers are especially bad for, you know, on different levels, not just the gas use and fossil, whatever, emissions and things. So. You know, and I understand, I understand that there are leaf blowers already being used. This isn't really gonna change it. It's just gonna make it more efficient in some ways, but I don't know. It just doesn't strike me as something we should just jump into. So I don't, and I know this was on for the last meeting and I wasn't here. And I, you know, I don't know if kicking it down the road, another meeting is gonna make anything, but I guess the questions I have are like, what, what are the, are there standards for how you maintain cemetery property, right? Is, you know, do you, do you have to have the, the leaves cleared off all the time? You know, I don't know. If that, if that's a sacred standard that, you know, I guess I understand that. I understand you wouldn't want leaves like all over the place, but could they, you know, could they be mulched? So I guess I'm just, I'd love to sit here and talk about it for another half hour or more and have more, like, have more information than just. In, in light of the fact. In light of the fact that we.
I guess I hear what you're saying. I guess my question to you is that we're not voting on what not, right, we're not voting whether not leaf blowing is allowed. We're voting whether or not we should spend the money on it, right? So it's kind of a like, like we limit ourselves, we're limiting ourselves, but I'm not limiting anybody else. Like, the conversation you're having is a great conversation like to have it. That's not, and that's not the conversation we're having right now. So I'm trying to have like, how do we, how do we, how do we combine the two or not combine the two, right? So we can just spend money, not whether we have, not whether we should have a gas-powered appliances in town. So that's my dilemma.
I mean, they're certainly connected, but let me ask you this, so, or Tim can maybe answer this. But, so I understand this big thing is much more efficient. I totally get that. But is it also like, I mean, I assume it's just, it's that much stronger and blows the this, you know, whatever, the pollen, the dust, all the particles even further and is, I don't know, louder, although I don't know if that bothers, apparently doesn't bother anybody, but I don't know, just interested in those questions.
I think, and Tim, you can correct me, but this machine, we currently have about three or four guys running leaf blowers out there, and this machine would cut out a couple of those guys at least, or at least trim down the time. Maybe they're out there for a couple of days. This would turn it down to a day or a day and a half instead of two or three days.
Yeah, both are correct. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I mean, I can tell you that there was a lot of, I did a little bit of research after the past meeting. You know, there are towns that have banned leaf blowers. I know we're not going to go down that path tonight, but just kind of, I wanted to kind of let you guys know that what I've researched, the towns that have banned leaf blowers are more for residential use, and they actually exempt Department of Public Works. And I think I sent that in my email to Joe. Brookline was one of the towns that was, I believe, talked about last meeting. If not, that was one of the towns that were that had banned leaf blowers as specific in their policy that DPW was exempt. I think just because of the nature of the work that we have to do and the size of the properties that we have to clear and clean and maintain. And I would say that the cemetery is held to a higher standard than all the other parks in town.
Yeah, like we.
It's a sacred ground. People like it to be clean and crisp and sharp.
We mulch at the other parks, but the cemetery.
You know, it's a it's a different, it's a whole different animal than a regular public park.
I think we mulched one time in the cemetery, and people did not approve of it years.
I mean, we've done a lot of work over there over the last three years or so with the grub treatment and the restoration of the of the grass areas. That was a large topic of concern just a couple of years ago with the condition of the cemetery. So, I mean, it all goes hand in hand. We're trying to do a lot of work over there to keep that into a specific and or or a high standard. You know, and mulching leaves, it'll it'll get dirty. It'll be sprayed all over headstones and tombstones and things like that. So I don't think that's the proper way to proceed, in my opinion.
This is when I just stare at everybody and wait for.
Yeah, I mean, I I respect all sides of the conversation. I think, I don't think I made my position unclear last time. I think my bigger concern that I voiced is like, this is an eight to 10-year contract on this piece of machine or eight-year contract that we said last time. I agree with what Jamie said, which is that we did just vote in a climate resolution at our last town meeting, and it's actually the process through which this unfolds and our inability to, A, make any data-driven decisions and not think creatively about other ways to solve this problem before we made the decision to do this. And it just makes me question like, where does the change start? And where does our commitment actually begin and end to doing these things that we've said we want to do? But I mean, I recognize that, you know, we need to cut down man-hours, and we need to be responsible, and the cemetery needs to be maintained at a higher standard. It doesn't change my moral stance, though, that that cemetery is not more important than the the long-term health of the people and the planet that are here, and that that doesn't change whether it's net neutral or not. That's still my position upon it. And I just hope that going forward, we are much more thoughtful, and we hold ourselves to a higher standard of just exploring what options are out there. And if that means we need to have more community engagement or help people understand why we're mulching instead of blowing or or make those decisions clearer, I I absolutely understand that. And I realize we can't, to Bill's point, make all of these changes and wrap these all up in this. But I'm I'm just not pleased with the way that we went about this and the way that we thought about it and the lack of options and the lack of data and the lack of creativity. I just don't think we did anything but do what we've always done and then justified why we're going to keep doing it.
I mean, I can tell you that I did look, research commercial-grade blowers, battery-operated, things like that. You're talking probably upwards of 40 to 50 grand right now for one of those. And I think over time, that number will come down as they get more and more marketable. But right now, you're talking probably about four to five times as expensive of a machine as a comparable model.
Well, I don't think, I agree, and I don't think commercial-grade, I don't think we're there with commercial-grade electric. I just hate to think that we're 10 years away from making a different choice in town. Like, that's disappointing to me.
You're like saying once we buy this.
We have multiple, we're going to be having, you know, even this leaf blower is is a is a piece of equipment. I mean, we're going to have changeouts of of other pieces of equipment. I know this is what we're talking about today, but it's it's one of those that I know that there is movement forward. But like I said, I don't think financially, I don't even, I don't know if it's at the right time right now financially for the town to proceed, just because there's limited options, limited availability. And it just, in my opinion, is not there yet for that commercial-grade use, as you mentioned. More residential use, for sure. But commercial-grade, commercial size, commercial power, it's it's not there yet, in my opinion. If it is, it's very expensive.
May I make a suggestion here?
Yeah, go for it. I mean, y'all should just take it to a vote, probably.
So my suggestion, and to Bill's point earlier, we're kind of talking about two different things that are related, right? The purchase of the new machine versus our environmental stance on our our pledge to the environment over the next 10, 20 years. I think maybe since you were talking about kind of how this has come about by this new equipment, and, you know, maybe we didn't until there was a a question raised, look at options. So maybe we work with the new HEIC if we ever can get some members on it.
They have one application.
Getting a draft, and I'm going to charge you, Caroline.
Oh, great, thank you.
To work with that group to bring some kind of maybe policy language for the Board of Selectmen so that we have something when things like this come up, police cruisers, et cetera, town vehicles, equipment, et cetera, that we look first to these other options. And in this case, as as Mr. Olson said, it's like a $40,000 or $50,000 option that we won't exercise because of the cost of it, but we at least have thought about it and then made the decision based on some rational facts, if that makes any sense. Because there may be some cases where we say, well, it's $5,000 more, we're willing to take that $5,000 more is to get something that's less environmentally impactful, if that makes sense to everybody.
I think it makes sense, because it's like, this is our first, this is our first opportunity to debate gas-powered equipment, right? So probably a bad example, because it's $9,000, it's probably going to burn less than 100 gallons of fuel a year, where our trucks on the road, all the trucks we have are burning hundreds a day, right?
Right.
So I mean, but we're trying to, but we're trying to do the right thing, right? So is this the right thing to do, the right thing on?
Right.
It's really not going to make it, it's really not going to make a bang for buck. It's a good statement to make here, but.
This actual gas-powered mower burns more fuel than a F-250, actually. Like, it actually does.
The amount of fuel we're going to burn.
Right, 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 but like, the efficiency of this is, like, it's it's really terrifying.
So I think, Sean, I think your idea is a good idea, and I think that's great if we if we can do that. But right now, we have no one on the the committee, and so that solves our future need, like when this comes up again. I don't think it solves the issue of this particular, what we do with this leaf blower situation. And I actually gave it a good amount of thought since our last meeting and thought about our discussion. And I do sort of agree that we are kind of talking out of both sides of our mouth in the sense that we, you know, voted on this climate action. We're like sitting on our pedestal of like, we're being green in the community. But then we just sort of like vote on this, you know, $9,000 machine. And ultimately, I get we're not like, you know, banning leaf blowers right now. We're not even having that discussion. But down the road, there's going to be that discussion, and maybe we have a carve-out for, you know, municipal employees. Maybe we have certain other carve-outs. We don't know what that looks like. But for us to make a decision and make a $9,000 decision now on this, and I understand the efficiency of it. I understand it's going to be overall better because they're using them anyway. But it seems like we're like, yes, we support green, we want to do this, but also like, not even pay attention to that and just sort of like make this decision. I mean, it just seems like we're not really staying true to like our ultimate goals and what our, you know, mindset is. So to me, I I did give it some thought, and I feel a little bit concerned, I guess. I wouldn't say concerned. I mean, I do feel like we're, you know, not staying true to what we're, you know, what our our game plan is around staying green, and we're just kind of like, okay, we'll we'll vote for this, even though we don't really have a game plan around it. So I think that's where I landed after a couple of weeks of thought.
After I shamed you about your home leaf blower, is that?
My leaf blower did die on me, so I think that was like.
And then you had Taylor and the kids out there raking.
Yeah.
I started raking, and I was like, you know what?
And again, I, this, I don't want to die on this hill. I might like keel over and crawl a bit on it, but, and I know, Tim, I know you're doing, you're doing the right thing for for your group and your team, and I I don't mean to make this a, you know, a the hallmark issue. I just think, you know, we should just be more thoughtful about that. We did just, I mean, we just bought a mower the last two meetings ago, and these are decisions that sort of stay with us for X number of years. So.
If I could offer a little positive news, I mean, the the town has been, where the town manager's office, the DPW, Public Works, fire, fire police, we've been working with National Grid on a on a program to recommend replacement of our vehicles with EVs. So we've, we've actually been uploading data with National Grid the last two months, and we're hoping to have a report in the next six months that will give us a, not just help us look at capital fleet replacement the way we've been doing it, but recommend to us what vehicles are are options for us. Hopefully, as soon as potentially this year, is there an option for a vehicle replacement this year that could be EV instead of, instead of gas-powered? So we we aren't ignoring it. We hadn't, we actually, quite frankly, you're right, Caroline. We hadn't drilled down to the level of leaf blowers and gas lawnmowers, but largely because just the the technology for that level of equipment hasn't reached the point where it's useful for us and our, I have an, I have an EV-powered, I have an electric-powered lawnmower at my house, but I couldn't use, we couldn't have Tim use that in the DPW because, you know, the the charge lasts about an hour. And then it, just enough to get my little bit of yard done. We can't deploy it on that scale, yet we have to perform in that scale. So, you know, I value the input, and it's a valuable thing for us to figure out how we can look at this differently going forward. Where we can make those changes now and still serve the mission, we want to make those recommendations, and we'll be doing that this year. But in this case here, I don't think that we can do the mission with an electric-powered, and we still have a mission to do.
Makes sense. I appreciate the conversation from everybody.
Jamie? See the wheels turning. Trying to trying to get a feel for whether anybody's going to make a motion or not.
Oh, we don't, we don't have a motion on the floor?
Nope.
Oh, nice.
No motion on this ocean.
I honestly, I'd say. That. It's possible. If I, I think if I, I mean, if I think if I vote tonight, which I have nothing, not even a motion there, so I'm not even going to tell you. But I'd probably vote no, but it's really not like, I'm not saying I would never approve this leaf blower. I'm just saying, I don't think, I'd, I'd like to have a little more time to analyze the leaf blower situation.
All right.
So that's all. I don't know.
So I'll make the motion, and we can continue to discuss it, but I make a motion to approve perpetual care fund funding expenditure for cemetery on a hurricane leaf blower.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. All right, any further discussion?
I mean, I think that the debate is good, but we're handcuffing our DPW director with the ability to do his job without giving a solution that actually makes sense. Because he's going to be spending more money, more gas, more time, more people, increase his budget. Yes, it would be perfect if there was electric leaf blower for $9,000 that did the same job, and if it was out there, we could buy it tomorrow.
It'd be a no-brainer.
Be a no-brainer. It doesn't exist, so we're trying to handcuff him with a hope. Hope is not a strategy for a DPW director to do his job. He's got to have concrete. He did it, he did the research. He did the math. He's, we we charge him with keeping our town for a certain budget with certain staff. I I don't think we can say no to this. I don't think it's responsible of us. Yes, long-term, can we develop a?
Well, we did the, it was like back of the math, napkin math, to be clear. It was like, currently, there's three guys spending a day and a half or two days. It's going to be this thing which we think is, like, there's no data here to say we are reducing. We currently have leaf blowers, and we have guys that use them, and we are saying it's an inefficient use of their time. They could be doing other things, other things, using gas-powered things. I have no idea what they're doing with that other thing time. Not that they're not doing something useful, but like, I'm uncomfortable saying that we have the data and the information, and we've compared them, and this is a more efficient, all-around option. I was a little unclear. It felt like napkin math to me.
I disagree. I think he's pretty, I think I trust his staffing and his ability to forecast, and I give him the credit too. And if he could do a spreadsheet, if you want him to do a spreadsheet, but.
No, I'm just, like we said, we have three blowers with three guys for three days, and we're pretty, we we think this will cut down a day, a half day.
Tim?
Well, I can tell you, we will not need our highway department in our cemetery doing leaves. For no matter how many days it takes, we wouldn't have to have our highway department in the cemetery. We could keep our two cemetery guys in the cemetery. So that right there, no matter how many days it is, we're keeping our highway guys doing the tasks that they are assigned to do instead of having to go over and help with leaves for a three, four-day period, whatever it is. That right there, for me, tells a tale as well as, and and as Bill said, I mean, if there was a comparable option or alternative, I would definitely consider it, but there isn't one. And I mean, if if I lose equipment due to damage or repair or or whatever it is, am I not going to get a new piece of equipment because we're going to wait for the electrical or the electric EV alternative to come out? I mean, I have to kind of proceed with work. I can't wait for this to happen, you know? I mean, there's a bit of time. I mean, I'm not going to lie. I mean, we're, we're pretty much done in the cemetery because we tabled this, and our guys had to do the work before the frost and the snow comes. So I I can't believe we're going to have this continue, but if that's the case, we do have some time. I'm not going to lie to you about that, so.
I must have misunderstood, because in the last meeting, you said if we didn't do this, we still had the three leaf blowers and the guys that were doing it. Like, you were like, I could still do it. They just asked for this, and I tried to get them what they want.
Since the, since the last meeting, we've done that. We've used those blowers.
If we don't approve the purchase tonight.
It'll be next year.
It'll be for next year.
But are we unable to do our jobs right now? Is, that's what I'm confused, yes or no?
We weren't unable to do the job. We just spent more man-hours and people on it. So he was, he was hoping if we approved it at the last meeting, you could buy the equipment, and this year, do it and save the man-hours and and the time. But with the postponement of the decision, they had to do it, so they did it as they normally do.
Right, we just did the normal operation, which is, which is fine, and I'm not, I mean, we just had to do it before the winter comes and weather changes. mean, we just had to do it before the winter comes and weather changes and get the equipment.
So, Tim, you said that the cemetery is clean and cleaned enough to get us to winter?
Yes, it's, it's all picked up. Yeah. I mean, it's, we had to, like I said, we have a timeline. We have to do it. So.
So rather than, rather than go forward with a failed motion, can I ask, do you withdraw the motion and we with, we withdraw the request?
Yeah, I suggest that. Who made the motion?
I made the motion, but his comment was we're going to do this, this whole discussion again next year?
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
It'll be in the spring probably, so.
Yeah.
Give us enough, Tim, give us enough time to do it before you have to start picking up leaves. Because guess what, guys? Leaves are going to come again tomorrow, next year, I mean.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll, we'll, we'll prepare a better analysis of the, of the situation.
Can I ask what, what you would like for me on this analysis? I mean, it's not really rocket science, in my opinion, to really break this down into, I mean, yeah, you called it napkin math or, but it's really kind of as simple as it is. I mean, it's, it's not, I don't know what else you would like for me to, to put together. I'll do, I'll be happy to do whatever you wish, but I'm not really sure. I mean, it's operational. It's an operational ask. So it's not, it's manpower, it's hours, it's equipment. I'm not sure what else I can do, especially if there's no other alternative.
So I think there's a split when we say, I agree with you that it is more manpower efficient. I think what I was taking, had questions about was when we say efficient, do we mean environmentally and like efficient? And when we're saying it's more efficient than the three that we have, my argument was that for running three leaf blowers, three small leaf blowers times six hours, is that more efficient than one giant one for two hours? I don't know if that's environmentally true. I agree with you that I, I absolutely trust your math on the number of people, but that's why I was like, if we have the three and we're trying to make an environmental decision and we already own them and we're already using them and we can buy ourselves time.
So that.
There's multiple layers of that.
I, I think Tim's also talking about the, the three or four blowers that we have, we've had them for some time now. And at some point, they're going to quit and we're going to have to replace them. So then we're back in this cycle again about gas powered versus.
Are, I think the question is, are we or are we going to try to do other things besides commit to leaf, like, what are the constants? Are we saying that 100% of the time, the leaves in the cemetery at whatever environmental or manpower cost have to be cleaned to 100%? Is that true?
That's the recommendation for our cemetery department.
Yes, absolutely. In my opinion, that's the way to do it. I mean, you look at a lot of other towns, the cemetery is held to a high standard. And just like other towns and compared to parks. So, I mean, we could go back in the day, we, I think we talked about this last meeting, we could go back to rakes and manpower, but I'm adding another three or four guys on my staff to do so. What, with what a piece of equipment can do for just under $10,000.
Right. And like you said, you saw.
You're probably upwards of $150,000 to $200,000 for the year.
And you, and you said you saw, when you looked into a, a handful of other communities that have leaf blower bans, but their DPWs use leaf blowers in their cemetery?
That's correct. Yeah, they, I mean, and I'm, I'm using Brookline as the prime example because they seem to be the kind of leader on some of this. And if you look at their policy directly, it says the exemption, DPW is exempt from this policy. Because we are a commercial grade municipal, we are that size of an operation that we cannot do it by residential leaf blowers or backpack blowers or rakes. We have to use bigger pieces of equipment, which are the roller, roller leaf blowers that we currently have or possibly a, you know, ride on that increases the efficiency as well, you know, the time and manpower to do other things. I mean, we could be in the, I mean, if we rake, we're going to be there for three, four weeks, raking the cemetery, which I'm not sure is the best use of time. Might be the most environmentally friendly, but that's, that's the, that's the trick. That's the game we play, right? I'm just trying to figure out, my, my job here is to improve efficiency in the, in the best interest of the town, to reduce costs, funding. Obviously environmental is a, is a, something to take pride in, in, you know, to control, but at the same time, we have to do our jobs as well. I mean, just like when we sand and salt roads and it, my job, if we had to be environmentally friendly, my job would be impossible. Or it would take five years longer than it does. So.
So.
I'm not sure.
It sounds like.
Especially if there's no other alternatives.
It's, it sounds like from the conversation that at least for this fall, that there's probably no use in the, or there could be some use, but maybe not a whole lot of use in the, the purchase of the leaf blower, given that the work is almost done. So we're looking at next spring when you have to go back out there as we're approaching the winter. I mean, I guess my question for the board is, can we in that time discuss and commit to some sort of policy on leaf blowers by that time? I mean, ultimately, I'm sure there'll have to be something that'll be brought to town meeting or whatever it is, but can we have that discussion? Can we start working through that and see if that's the route we want to go with banning leaf blowers? And is there a carve out for DPW? And then we, you know, by next spring, we can have at least a better framework in our, our group here of whether that's the direction we're moving in, whether we're putting in exceptions. And that way, we can have a comfortable conversation next spring and say, yes, we can absolutely purchase this because we already talked about a potential carve out for DPW. We have this, we have these various things in place. I mean, I'm wondering if we start that conversation now and, you know, start taking some serious steps towards, you know, kind of backing up the things we've committed to. And, you know, you know, we're talking about being green and being a green community. I think we need to have that conversation and, you know, start taking actionable steps.
Yeah, I, I'll change your statement a little bit. I think, I think the leaf blowers is fine, but I think for our board, I would think, in my opinion, it would be more of a policy towards municipal purchases on equipment and looking for environmental options with them, instead of just specifically leaf blowers. I mean, because right now, the conversation is about a leaf blower. But I think the conversation has to be broader if we're moving towards this environmental kind of a consciousness for the board and the town to get to our goal. It should be more than just leaf blowers, you know?
Right. Like, that's what my point was, is that leaf blowers get used a couple of weeks a year. Lawnmowers get used six months a year.
Right.
And they're all gas powered lawnmowers.
Right.
So it's, the leaf blowers is really about pollution of sound than it was about pollution of environment. That was the original discussion, right? So I don't want to get this all mixed up. Talking about pollution of sound, we're talking about gas powered things, talking about municipality. So yes, it needs to be a big broader thing.
Right.
But at the same time.
And I.
He can't handcuff our DPW.
I don't think leaf blowers are limited to just the sound. I mean, I think that's what it came up originally.
Yes, that's how it came up originally.
I think that's how originally came up, but I don't think it's in a vacuum that it's just sound. I think there's a lot of, you know, negative impacts of a leaf blower, environmental and sound related.
Far worse than lawnmowers.
Far worse than lawnmowers.
Not true. One day maybe, if you run a lawnmower against a leaf blower one day.
Are you just looking at the gas? There's also the microbiome effects of, of, of leaf blowers. There's the pollutants in the air, the spread of fertilizer from one yard to the other. It's not the same for more.
Lawnmowers do all those same things. I'm not going to debate that with you right now. Lawnmowers get used every day for months on end. So if you're going to have a leaf blower, you're going to have to have a lawnmower. You can't, you can't separate, my point is you can't separate them. You're going to have to have one regulation that's more broader that deals with gas powered residential, commercial tools and the stuff you want to, right?
Right.
We're not going to work on just a leaf blower.
Yeah, can I back?
I would agree with that.
Can I back us up just a little bit to what I was talking about earlier? I think we need to think about a policy from the select board about municipal purchases, environmental stuff.
Right.
I think you're talking maybe a little bit more about townwide bans, like we banned plastic bags in town a handful of years ago. I think that's more of a something that would come from the HEIC as a proposal to the Board of Selectmen. I'm talking about what we can do as a municipality to meet our environmental goals. So I think a policy that has us have some kind of process for looking at those options when things come up like a needed leaf blower or a new police cruiser or something like that, that we, we weigh our options to say, we're not going to spend an extra $50,000 on a leaf blower at this point in time. But we've done a due diligence to.
Right. Our policy needs to be bigger than one thing, one time.
Right.
Right. Needs to be global, think broader and, and think big picture.
Right. I have no problem with the banning of leaf blowers if it's another thing, but I think it's.
Has to be a bigger, right. Whether we ban loopers or not ban leaf blowers, it has to be part of a bigger, global thing, right? That's what I'm, we can't like just, we can't just cherry pick these things when it comes up. And I agree with you. So now we're, you know, we're, we're not voting for it because we want to have a policy. We don't have one. That's the problem I have with this, is we're putting him, Tim, not allowing him to do his job because we wish we had a policy and we don't. I don't like that way of governing. I think that's bad. And now we're going to talk about it again in a year. Maybe that's okay, because maybe magically in a year, there'll be some commercial battery powered.
Maybe the Boy Scouts will rake the cemetery or something.
So maybe we, we take that advantage and say, yes, let's hope. Hope's not a strategy, but let's hope things happen in a year. But I just don't get governing of it. We're not going to vote on something because we wish we had a policy we don't have. I think that's a bad idea. But if you want to table this, I'll let you table it.
Does the motion maker have to ask?
I made a motion, but, and he seconded it, but that's where we left it.
We can, we can either, because I feel we're going to have a negative vote on this. I've, I would suggest that either someone tables it or we have Mr. Olson rescind his motion.
He doesn't want to.
If he doesn't want to, then I would say the other option.
Well, I, I may rescind it if it's going to lead to a bigger discussion right now.
He means the other Mr. Olson. He means that Mr. Olson on the board. Tim, he means Bill.
I mean, Bill Olson, not Tim Olson, sorry. I should have specified my Olson.
Bill Olson, Bill Olson, Bill Olson made the motion. He means Bill Olson, not Tim Olson.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Well, Tim, I'll look to your recommendation. Would you like us to vote on it or rescind it or table it?
I think the administration would withdraw its request for the funding. That would mean that you could.
That would be the third option, I guess.
Was there, what was?
We have, we have three options here, just to be clear.
I rescind the motion.
We'll withdraw our request.
Perfect. Thank you. The town administration has withdrawn their request, so we do not need to table it. We do not need to rescind the motion. Motion is null. All right. So can we, before Tim gets offline here, I'm going to assume Tim's going to come back to us in the springtime with a very similar request. What would we like to see from him so that we can have a more, not that this wasn't a robust and good discussion, but a more informed discussion?
So from, I mean, from my perspective, I'm, and I, so I, Bill, I totally respect and resonate with your comments there. And I do, like, I, part of it is, I just one more time, but really my main focus is not so much on the gas powered versus electric as it is, do we really need to clear all the leaves from the cemetery? And I, if, and I don't know anything about it, okay? So I want to look at, that's what I want to look into. So I don't know that, I mean, Tim, if you can help with, there's a particular standard of cemetery care, that's great, but I'm not really expecting that of you. I'll, I'll do my own research on it, I guess.
Yeah.
Because it's not, it, yeah.
I'll just show, Jamie, sorry to interrupt you, that I would say probably most of the complaints that we do get with the DPW are cemetery related when there's leaves or grass issues or other things. It's typically, I would say, other than some other kind of hot button things in town, that's one of our biggest kind of things that people are saying. The, the standards of the cemetery are kind of higher than other things.
We spent a lot of money on the, like the grass, the cemetery, right? Ton of money over the last few years.
Yep.
To get the grass right and leaves, you know, leaves will.
It is one of those things. People just expect a certain level of, of things. And like the mulching thing, I think it sounds great, but it ends up, as Tim said, it gets all over the tombstones and then we'd have to clean the tombstones. And then it also leaves kind of a brown layer on the grass and people expect it to be a pristine thing.
Yeah.
But I totally agree. It's more environmentally sound than mulch.
Is there data on the complaints at least? Is that easy or is that, is that kept track of?
Well, we've, I mean, I think somebody should reach out to our foreman and ask his opinion on this, to be honest. He's the one that is in charge of the cemetery. He's the one that holds it to a high standard. He takes it personally. Very emotional about it. Takes pride in it. So I'm not going to make any determination for him. I'm not going to say one thing or another because ultimately it comes to him. He deals with the customers, the residents. He deals with the burials. He shows the property that people are purchasing. So it's, it's, it needs to be held to a standard that people, like I said, they purchase property there to be there for, for the rest of time. So I don't think, personally, I don't think mulching is proper and for, for a place like that. So.
I respect that and I may end up in that, I may end up in that position too. But my question was about whether there was tracking of complaints and I'm not.
We could probably get you with the number of complaints about cemetery. I fear that there won't be very many about leaves because we typically clean the leaves. So that, that's something people already expect and it gets done.
Right.
We do get, attract complaints as far as, you know, we, we had a lot of complaints a couple of years ago when, when we were having the grub problem. So that led to the whole first, first with the grub treatments and then with reseeding and, and we, we continued that earlier this year. That was another expenditure from the perpetual care fund was to do some more hydro seeding in the cemetery to continue to take care of the cemetery in the way people want it to be taken care of. And, and we're just basically going off of what people tell us what they call it.
Okay.
I just want to touch on one thing that Tim said. I actually, similar to Jamie, this is not about a policy for me. And honestly, if one of the leaf blowers broke and you needed to make a $2,500 investment for two or three years, that would be very different for me than, than a $9,000 investment that has a, I mean, we said eight year. I don't know if that's the true number. Because there's just, and I know I'm sweating hairs and I'm sure, Tim, you're, you want to put me in that cemetery, but we have three working leaf blowers that have lower price tags and shorter lifetimes that don't represent an investment in something that I'm morally opposed to for the period of time that we're talking about. And so I don't want you to think that if one of your leaf blowers broke, I'd be like, no, I absolutely won't replace it. That is actually a different thing to me than doubling down on something that is larger and more environmentally destructive for a longer period of time. And again, I could be dead wrong. You could come back and say, no look at this information, like you're dead wrong. And I'm taking out the man hours from that. But that's actually the difference to me. It's not a policy into say like everything has to be lithium ion battery powered, which comes with its own set of problems. It's, in light of everything that's happening, I don't know that I feel like right now is a good time to double down on this particular piece of machinery for the period of time that it represents. But I do not want to leave anyone in your department unable to do their job. That is not, that was not my goal with bringing this up in the last meeting, nor continuing to talk about it in this meeting. It, it just seems too perfluous and a little bit insensitive right now. But I recognize that there are multiple viewpoints here.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Tim, for joining us.
So I, I mean, I guess my question overall, back to it was, when I come back, if I come back, when I come back, what type of data would you want me to show you? Is there alternatives? Is that what you're wanting me to, or are we going to just table this until we have a policy in place?
I, I guess my thoughts on it, and anyone can correct me if I go sideways with it, but I think if you bring this request to us again in the springtime or whenever, that you would have some alternatives, be they non-cost effective at the moment, and also to Caroline's point, some kind of useful lifespan and fuel usage noise, any data on whether that machine is more disruptive than the individual leaf blowers and leaf blower timeline. Like if we buy a backpack unit, is that a two or three year run with it as opposed to an eight year run with this machine? Am I kind of summarizing that from what people were kind of saying? So I think that data would be good and also general complaints about the cemetery, since we can't be specific about leaves, just maybe kind of general comments, either add a voice for replanting the grass or what's wrong with the grass kind of stuff. I think if you include all those kind of touch points of complaints or people saying nice things about the cemetery, it would be good to have this kind of background data to see how much kind of comments are made about it. And then I think talking to your cemetery foreman, when it comes time to kind of talk about his standards and maybe if other communities. if other communities, if they're holding their cemeteries to same standards. Does that make sense to everybody? Did I miss anything?
I think it all makes sense. I think that it really comes down to us having a policy.
Yeah. And I think hopefully before then, Tim, we've got a policy on, on something that you can look at.
I think that's what we're struggling with. We don't have a policy.
Right, and I think when we get to talking policy, and this is here nor there, is, as Tim said, many communities that he's looked at, they have a policy, but it's, the DPW is exempt from it. So where do we stand on that? That's other future debate, right? So.
Buy more rakes.
Buy more rakes. Thank you, Tim, very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
All right. Up next, we have goal-setting and evaluation for the town manager discuss. I apologize, late-breaking news, I sent everybody an email an hour before the meeting.
You got what I showed you before, right?
Yes, and is this what I sent you today?
Is this?
You sent today, yeah.
This is, this is, is, is this the one we use, or is it a variation of it?
This is the one we used, December 2020. It's a blank one. It has, basically, nobody's filled it out, but it's the, the goals and et cetera that we had at the time. So I just wanted to share it for kind of, I guess, a baseline on what we used last time. And then Jamie and I spoke to it a bit, and we both kinda felt it needed a little bit of improvement to it. So what I'd like is people to look it over, and if you think it's great, we'll run with it. But if you think it's got some improvements, could we just, we'd like to improve it.
So we had eight sections before, and each section had five or six questions. And I think we had two different versions. One was just like, do you meet goals? Do you exceed them, or do you need improvement? You check the box. Other one was, you actually gave it like a number, and then we sort of added up the numbers. I don't remember which way we ended up doing it, because they both had their, their pros and cons.
Right. I think we ended up.
So in, I've only, I've only been here on the board for one round of this, and this is what we used. But the, at the bottom, we had.
Just scroll down.
Probably a list of seven or so priority goals that I think Sean or somebody deleted from this, just because they were, I assume, just because they were the goals from that year.
Yeah. If you go to the sheet one, sheet one has the goal, so that's kind of the goal, this worksheet. So sheet one is the goals, and then sheet two is, so. We have to fill this in and populate it, but that was kind of the, and this was like the score, I think, of like, like, this was like the other thing we'd do is score, like, one through 10. I think we had two different versions, right?
Yep. And then I'm, I'm currently, and I apologize if I didn't put it earlier, but I just sent everybody a list of the goals from the workshop that we did at the Patton-Homestead.
Yeah, like, here was, we had five goals here, right? Patton-Homestead.
Right.
Capital stabilization fund, well exploration, town hall renovations, and master plan, and affordable housing, right? So this, those were the.
Right. And so I, I, I think when Jamie and I spoke, and Jamie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we had kind of a handful of different discussions that, I don't know if we got to a conclusion on them, but we talked about having, we've set goals, basically, we haven't set them, but we talked about them at that workshop. So once we get the kind of evaluation tool figured out, we'll have to kind of punch in some kind of past stuff that would be included in this current kind of review session, but then also, there's gonna be some ones that are future goals as well, because it'll be post-evaluation. So determining which ones are actually, you know, pre-evaluation that he's accomplished, or, or ongoing, plus future ones that we look at. And then I think in addition to these goals that we made up at that workshop, he already has some kind of baked-in goals per the special act for town manager. As far as, you know, presenting a budget, you know, different things like that, that are kind of the baseline things that should be in there anyway. Then plus these added goals that we've thought of from the workshop, if that makes sense. Is that about right, Jamie? Did I get any of that right? Anything you wanna add to that? We also had an employee survey last time, and it was kind of, they didn't really connect. There wasn't, like, we had a town manager evaluation, then we had an employee survey, but they didn't, they didn't, that's the word I'm looking for. We didn't kind of crunch all the data together, and we weren't sure how to do that. So I don't know if we wanna talk about that as well, and whether the employee data is from all town employees, or just department heads. Or whether we wanna include that at all, or just do a select board review. So these are all kind of the things we need to mull over and, and do it in a fairly timely manner, since we haven't really set his goals yet. And at some point, we have to evaluate his performance. Thoughts? Questions?
So, well, I mean, I, I mean, as far as the employee, the survey, right, and how that fits in, I mean, that seems to fit in, if you like, right? The, the general management communication and personnel management, primarily the personnel management, right?
Right.
If that was to be a data point in how those get filled out.
Right. Is there some kind of specific question that we could ask department heads based on some of those criterias which you're kinda speaking to, I'm guessing? Okay.
Yeah, and then we just need to add some, well, add some prior, some of the priority goals to this.
And I know you've kinda just gotten it, so I totally respect if you're, have no opinion at the moment.
It needs to be, it needs to be a tool, right? Not just a check the box for the tool, right? So what's a good tool for Joe to use to help him? So I think that's part of the thought process, too.
Right.
We broke, I mean, can we, we gotta walk through what people are thinking about. We broke it into eight sections, right? We broke it into general management communication, personnel management, financial management, planning, interorganizational cooperation, professional growth, and goals, community outreach, and, and then the priority goals, which is the, which is sort of what we just talked about.
Right.
So I think the first thing is to make sure we're capturing all the buckets, and if we have too many or too few, now we broke, broke each bucket, like, specific examples of things he should do, or we think he should do, or he does, on a daily basis, weekly, monthly. I was thinking, you know, one thing that's written two years ago, so what's changed in the last two years with, with the town manager role responsibility that we might need to add? That we hadn't thought about before, promotes, based on our new, any, any, any new sort of policies we have, or developments we have.
So since this is somewhat new information tonight, let's talk kind of timeline for next steps. Or process the next steps. Thoughts?
Can you remind me, I'm sorry, I was busy reading, how, the intersection of this document and the, the specific goals that we came up with in that meeting? You're saying that those would live at the bottom, or would they be interspersed within the category subheads?
They, I mean, they, historically, at least the last round, right, they were listed at the bottom. But theoretically, if one of the goals has to do with community outreach, then maybe, maybe it goes under seven, rather than just goes down underneath as a priority goal, as.
I mean, like, yeah, I mean, last time, for example, we had five, right? Two of them could have fit in other buckets, right? One was capital stabilization fund and financial policies, which could have fit in the financial section. But we didn't put it in there, because it was very specific. And the other one was master plan, developing a master plan, and there's a planning section, but we didn't put it in there because we thought it was different. But you could have, so yeah, so there is, yeah, that's a discussion we could have about whether we wanted to embed them in these categories, or not, if they fit into a mold, but they, they could. Depends on how well, depends on how well, how well-defined our town manager specific project goal. I think, I look at them with more specific project goals than they are sort of.
Yeah, I pulled like five or six different town manager goals from the interwebs after our last conversation. And I, I agree that, like, they were sort of split between, some of them are hyper-specific, like, this year, your job is to, like, get the cell tower turned on. If you don't do that, you get an F minus. That was just an example for those. Versus, like, these, these categories. So I guess my question would be, what would be the most helpful to you? Because these seem very, like, broad, specifically broad, but broad. Like, effectively oversees town's interest in all matters of litigation, delegates proper and efficient use of our town council.
Right. And, and I would say, for the folks that haven't been through this process before, like, so for example, on that one, you just said, Caroline. I would say, in my comment thing, I would say the kind of specifics. So I would take that general comment.
Yep.
And when I put my comment in, you know, I would say, oh, proficient, or whatever the designation is. And then say, Joe handled litigation this year between X, Y, Z thing with, that, that, and then color commentary on kind of elaborating. So it became more specific in the comment section of it, if that makes sense, instead of just saying, yep, proficient, and then next question. Because as you said, it's very general.
So the goals from the beginning of the year would be listed at the bottom. We would rate in category, and then we would try to apply those examples up through the rubric.
That's typically how I've done it.
Okay.
But we don't have to do it that way, if there's a better way to skin the cat, as they say. I'm all for it.
I've used most of my words in this meeting, so I'm just looking for a line leader.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we tried to build a flexible review that could be customized with the comments, because we wanted the review to be consistent. So we changed our review format every year we do Joe's review, then it's like, what's the point? It's like you just customize, right? So we tried to be flexible. So because we're flexible, some of the things, like you point out, are very general. And the reason we had the, like, for example, the reason we had the one that you just read about was because years ago, we changed our council, because we were having issues. So once again, Joe got a good mark for, like, hey, recognize a weakness, brought in new council in, and it improved from that. So it'd be able, so, but, but there might be a year where there's, there's nothing in litigation, so you kinda just leave that one, like, vague. So, but that's what we tried to, tried to build. I agree with you. Tried to build a broad, flexible database, so that it would be consistent per year, per year. And sometimes, things are important, sometimes they weren't, but at least you could talk to it. Does that make sense?
Okay.
But I don't think these are end-all, be-all.
Only if you want me to. I'm not, I mean, this is, I look at this as your tool to, how you wanna evaluate me, so that I.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that statement. I think it's our tool, but the ultimate goal is to, I mean, obviously, rate your performance would also help you perform better with more efficiencies based on the feedback you get, right? So comment away.
I, I agree with Bill. I think it'd be, if we're gonna, I'd, I'd like you to do some kind of, you know, evolution of this type of tool, because that's what was used the last time. There was nothing used in the year in between, so it'd be great to, to get another one done. I think that while it's important to try to evaluate my ability to manage the, the staff, I urge, if you're gonna do a survey of employees, my personal opinion would be to survey those, those employees who are gonna have the most interaction with me. To do it to all 65 permanent employees in the system may not be helpful, because there's probably 35 of them who don't work on a regular basis with me, and wouldn't know how to answer that. So you're gonna have a lot of blank spaces. I think if you focus on department heads, and, and then the next level down, you'd probably get a lot, a little bit more useful information out of that group. And I don't say that because I necessarily think they're all gonna give me high marks. I think the, like, with anything, it'd be a, a little bit of a mixed bag. But I think you'll get better data from, from that group than from another.
Right, like, the, the part-time summer help guy at the DPW.
Yeah, I don't think they even know what I look like, much less, you know, what, what my impact on their day-to-day is, so, that's the kind of, meets exceeds goals and needs improvement are nice, broad areas. I just kinda wonder, you know. Prepares and distributes materials, information, reporting to the town boards, committee staff. I don't know how you exceed goals. You're either doing that, or you're not, kinda thing. So it's kinda, it seems like one that would be hard to be exceeds goals, but maybe this, maybe.
Make them really colorful and inviting.
But, yeah, just, I'm open to input on, I'm open to input on this.
And that was a big one that we worked hard to do, and you're doing it now with your town manager board. So that wasn't, like, would say, like, years ago, you need improvement, now you meet goals. And then next year, maybe you're, you know, it's three, it's a three-page color fold-out, and you exceed expectation.
But, yeah, I'd love to have a little more definition, too, on the, on the priority goals for this year. We talked a lot about, I think there were over 20 different things that were discussed in that, in that planning session at the beginning of June. Love to, you know, finalize what the top five or six or whatever are, in addition to all the day-to-day stuff. And if they mix in through these seven areas, that's fine, too. It's not, I just need to.
Yeah.
I need to focus on. I feel like in the past years, the priority goals that I've been given, we've done a pretty good job on tackling and trying to bring them to resolution. You know, we have the value, we have developed an evaluation tool for department heads, and, and I did that last year, and we'll be following it up this year with, with the next step of that. So that never existed here before, so we've got that in.
It's, it's, right, it's, I mean, so the other issue here is that, there's what? I gotta count up here, but there's 50, 45 to 50 points, right? Not to point anybody out, there's some people here that may not know the answer to some of these things. At fairness, you haven't been around long, I haven't talked to you long, so then how do you get the ans- like, do you not answer it? Or do you have to, like, go, you go to town hall for a day, and you could talk to people at town hall? So that's part of the process, too.
Yeah, so that's part of the process, too. So in the past, it's been typically during the evaluation, kind of, you know, we, we get to, we say, okay, you've got two meetings or whatever to get this back to us. And so then, if you're not up to speed on kind of all the stuff throughout the evaluation, that, then you do go to the town hall, and you sit down with Joe, and you say, oh, well, I have this question here. It says this, this, and this. Well, have you done that?
Yeah, who do you go talk to?
I mean, to that point, I guess, I mean, this is, you know, the job description with all of his duties, right? That are, he's either required to do, or that he may have to do. Like, when I look at, you know, my job description, it has, you know, 40 things on there. I might not do all of those things, because they might just not come up in the year. So we're gonna evaluate things on things that may come up, that he may not even, you know, you know, what if there is no litigation in the year? And he doesn't have to consult on a litigation matter. I almost.
Maybe an NA column?
Yeah, I almost think, or almost think that, like, we should consolidate some of this into, like, you know, keep the categories, personnel management, financial management, but have like more, like, broader goals in here that encompasses some of this language, but have like a one or two sentence under personnel management, something that can be evaluated that we can see. Like, oh, he promotes effective communication with staff, and things like that. You know, I think those are gonna be like key traits, and, you know, do, do, like, broad-based duties, and then look at the actual, you know, priorities. So how is he managing these particular projects, and looking at those are probably gonna be just as important. So I think, I don't necessarily think we should be looking at every single job description, because I just don't think it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard for everyone to evaluate that. To begin, like you said, I thought to talk to Joe and find out, did you even do this this year, or did that come up? I think more consolidating it would be more helpful.
So it sounds to me like Tom wants to be a member of a subcommittee to work on this. Who else is volunteering besides Tom?
If you do most of the work, I'll agree with you.
Well, I, I will, I will agree with you, but in a different way. I'll say, I, the, once again, revisionist history, not revisionist, but past history is that I do a lot of reviews, a lot of employees, a lot of reviews, and I don't like reviews to boil down to a number at the end of the day. This is a main thing, but it's more important to get the information out there, to get the discussion, the comments, which is why the comments are important, right? Which is why I have like three columns of comments. So that's what's the important part for Joe, is that not necessarily to check the box for the comment, but so this is supposed to give you sort of spur thought, conversation, to make the comments. I agree with you that there's a lot of these here, so maybe if one doesn't spur conversation, you're entitled to leave a blank.
Yeah.
Without it negatively impacting anybody. Maybe that's a better thing than to actually get rid of them or boil them down. I actually would rather add some, or edit some than remove some, but, but I don't know if I would just boil them down to, to more general.
I think I tend to agree with you, Bill. I mean, not that, Tom. I think I tend to agree with you, Bill. I mean, not that Tom's an intelligent fellow, but, but I think that, that NA ability to just.
Yeah.
Cause I, I've been around this a few, few times. And so there's years where people leave parts blank because they never, never had a conversation with the town manager about it, or it was something that just didn't happen in that cycle.
Yep.
And that's fine because it's not, it doesn't end up as a needs improvement thing because there's just no, no data on it.
Right.
It's just a blank space. So, you know, and I think if we were to take stuff off, then it might not go back on, not saying that we wouldn't notice it, but you know, the next year round would, well, we'll just copy the previous one. And then maybe it's, it's lost in translation. And I'd hate that to happen if it's something that maybe comes back up again.
We're not involved in the, we're not involved, as of five of us, we're not involved in day-to-day town government, right? And what he's doing as he's a town manager.
There used to be a question on the evaluation when I first got on the board that was, does, does the town manager wear his hard hat on the construction site? And I said, this is ludicrous as on here. This is clearly operational and I can't supervise him on the job site to make sure he's wearing his construction hat. And I'm not going to ask the shop foreman if Joe wore his construction hat. So there's a lot of things that we just pulled out of the evaluation and then, you know.
So there's precedence for pulling things off.
And Jamie's point, yes, there is.
Yeah, I'm fond of the, I'm fond of the NA too. As long as these are like, these are, you know, sort of like framed in a way of these are like the, the duties that he may, you know, be responsible for in the course of a year. You know, comment on an inhabit NA of like, oh yeah, we didn't see him do this because it didn't, wasn't available, have the NA category.
Yeah.
Then kind of check the box on the ones that were.
I think, right. I think these could be, I mean, I want to say, I think we should all look at them and maybe edit some of them. Yeah. Like I'm not saying that these are, and these are two years old. They might need to be cleaned up, but.
So here's the.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So, right. So the question is, we have to get the evaluation tool finalized, right? That's the next step. So is that, and we've sort of talked generally about that, but who, who's gonna like at least bring it just for final evaluation, maybe at the next select board meeting?
I can work on it.
With Tom?
Tom.
Yeah.
Let's, if I may suggest, wonderful subcommittee here. Thank you for volunteering, both of you.
We'll stay after school here.
Stay after school. Um, and I think in parallel to that, we also have to have some type of a wheat from the shaft ranking of the goals that we made up from the patent homestead. That can, that can either be you two, but I think it maybe be another group of two of us. And then we circulate it in some kind of a spreadsheet for ranking by the rest of the folks. And then we kind of mash it all together when you guys have an evaluation tool and then we kind of plug it all in, if that makes any sense. Does that seem reasonable or am I off base?
Sounds good.
Okay. So, subcommittee for town manager evaluation. And I have some of the past bad evaluations, not that they're bad town manager evaluations for our town managers, but I would say the, not the best format. But I can share some of those ones with you so that you can maybe if you want to pull some good out of those ones, but I think this format that Bill and I kind of worked on a few years ago is.
Proper instruction, how to fill it out is very important.
That's my next, that's my next point. I've been here about what? Nine years almost now. So we've had a handful of select persons over the years. For lack of a better word, go rogue with an evaluation. And it's a bummer because I've compiled a lot of these over the years for evaluations and they're inadmissible. So, you know, when you've got everyone ranking on a one through four scale and someone does no scale and they write something completely different, I can't, I can't blend it in to make a cohesive thing. So when we do the, get the evaluation tool, employ you to kind of follow the directions uh, and fill it out correctly, or else it really, you're kind of throwing your vote away basically. So keep that in mind.
Yeah, right. We have to keep in mind, we make sure it's clear. There's not going to be a misinterpretation of how to fill it out.
Right.
And that we all agree to do it. Otherwise it becomes useless, right? And it needs to be a productive tool for everybody. So.
Right.
And once the tool's in place, at least are we gonna sort of use the same process that we did in the past, which Tom and Caroline probably don't know about? Is that like, right?
What do you think? What do you think?
Separate, right. I mean.
What we did before, we all would fill it out and then one person would compile them.
Yep.
And I remember for the, it was, it was anonymous. It was just.
That's really legally the only way you really can do it. So
Yeah.
One person, usually the chair, but it doesn't have to be the chair, has to be designated to receive all of them and compile them. Otherwise.
That's how it's be, that's how it's usually done in the past.
All of them have to be put forward as public work product. As your individual work product, they can be compiled by one member. Otherwise you have to do the whole thing in public session.
Can they be compiled through like Google forms? Like could we submit a Google form or does it, is that not allowed? So that it's self, it's automatically compiled for the.
I, I believe that you could probably, if whoever's checking.
They change some of the regulations with the way things are collected or public information and we'll have to maybe have councils.
Yeah.
It'd be easy for us to share it through Google Docs, but you have to tell us whether you're allowed to or not.
I don't, I'm not sure that you are because it can, it, I think it was interpreted and we'll have.
This came up on the con.
We'll have KP, we'll have KP Lahr, we confirm this, but I believe it, it's possible to, um, it's possible to influence somebody else's determination by seeing what other people are saying.
No, not a Google doc, a form. So we would put this in a survey format and you would respond as if they were survey questions.
Yeah.
And then put your comments and then it would collate it in a response document.
Work a Google, Google form into it where it's an individual responding and then I get it and then I compile them and then distribute the compilation to you guys and Joe for dissemination.
Yeah, cause the form will give you that spreadsheet.
The issue with the Google Docs is you're sharing and then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that, that one makes sense to me. And it may not be worth it, but I can't imagine manually putting together the form, the.
And I'll, and I'll say there are limitations to Google Docs, the Google Forms that I've used. So maybe the best format is a spreadsheet still, like an Excel spreadsheet or something like that, depending on how it's set up. It's tough in Google Forms sometimes to get a similar format like that, but we could try it and it can populate something.
Yeah, you should be able to export the data into Excel and you can format however you want.
Yeah.
Since we're getting into all this tech talk, just question. Is it possible? And it's kind of, this is kind of related, but a little bit of a sidetrack, but I know we're talking about like the priority goals for, for putting those together and kind of putting like actionable goals and timelines. Like have we at all considered like at some point, like some sort of like project management software like Jira or like Smart Sheet or something where we can actually put all of these into like a document that's going to like track, you know, action items and milestones and deadlines and have like a report that we can look at that says like, rather than us, you know, you know, I read Joe's reports all the time, but you have to look through and be like, okay, like where are we on this? Like it'd be nice if we just had a document that said like, hey, here's, um, you know, here, we're meeting this deadline. We're not meeting this one. This is how far we're off. I don't know. I mean.
I think that's a good idea. Something like the ones you mentioned, there's another, it's like, I think it's called Trello. I don't know if it's still around or not, but it's a project tracking tool.
Yeah, project management. I know they're like.
I'd like you to get us on a Conbon board by summer of 2023. Can you work on that?
What's that?
Can you get us on a Conbon board by 2023?
A who?
Within Jira, which is what we're talking about. It's like a Conbon board is like a board where you put all your tasks on one, on the left side.
Okay.
And there's categories throughout. So whether it's planned, ready, in progress, under review, finalized, done, and you move, you physically drag them across the board. And then you assign them to people in the left column. So, I mean, it's just a project management software, but it's used for like agile.
So when's Tom doing this?
Tom's doing it by 2023, summer 2023.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Move into the future.
Move into the future.
You know?
Uh, it sounds like you got a little side research to do now.
You're gonna have to educate me because I don't know how to use project manager software.
I mean, I use it at work. So I can, I can.
If you, let's, uh, so.
Then I'm gonna have to train my, all my department heads to help.
Why don't we add that to new business at the end of the meeting and we'll
Okay.
Follow up on that. Either you or one of us or all of us will follow it up. All right. So let's, let's wrap this up here. So Tom and Bill are going to work together at the evaluation tool. Who are the other two that are going to help with the goals, priorities? Really it's just kind of putting them in a spreadsheet with priorities and send them to people.
Joe already put them in a table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The question of prioritizing them comes down to knowledge and how much of it is subjective versus objective. So as much as I'd like to volunteer myself, I believe of the three remaining candidates, I'm the least qualified.
Well, I guess that's me.
So.
Jamie, I'll, I'll work with you if you're okay with that. I hopefully you know, you know Excel more than I do. I'm terrible at Excel, full disclosure.
If it's formatting, I'm happy. I just didn't know, like, how are we ranking priority order of goals and how much of a background knowledge base do you need in order to do that?
That's not our job.
Oh, it's just putting it in the thing?
Getting it so that somebody else can.
You're not gonna prioritize.
Five of us are gonna do it.
On what you think your priorities are. So and.
So it sounds like you just volunteered yourself.
Right. Yes.
All right. I'm off the hook. So it's you and Jamie.
Yep.
I like this delegating of authority.
Damn it.
So we have Caroline and Jamie working on a priority spreadsheet for the rest of us to, to fill out. Bill and Tom working on the evaluation tool. And then do we think we can get those two things accomplished by our next meeting on the fifth?
Is that our next?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's reasonable. I think we have.
Does that, that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect.
Let's schedule something with my head.
Now we have something to do over Thanksgiving.
Uh, and then we should also at that next meeting, talk about timeline for having an evaluation. Probably determine that next meeting, when we want to actually finish the evaluation form. Duke.
Uh, Duke Seaver of Hamilton. You already have a, a way to measure what each of you are doing. And that, I had that installed on the warrant. Say how we voted on a particular thing. It's already there. You, you did vote for it. You didn't. You did, you didn't. And it's already, the information's already there for every warrant that we ever had, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep. Correct. All right. Select board meeting calendar for January 2023 to June 2023, discuss and vote. Are any of those dates holidays for anybody? I know that we have an upcoming meeting on the first night of Hanukkah, which I'm sure is a conflict for some people.
All right.
And I apologize for that.
There's eight nights. It's okay.
They're all let the first night, right? So.
Everyone remember to get your taxes in early because Tuesday, April 18th is tax day. So you will not be doing that the day of this.
Is that a school vacation? Is that school vacation week?
The April.
April 18th.
Actually, I think Tuesday, February 21st might be as well.
It is. Oh wait, you'll be gone. No children in the schools, but you're going to use that as your excuse.
My wife works in the public schools.
Sounds like a, sounds like a marriage problem.
Do, do we want to approve this now? Or do people want to really look at their calendars and see if there's any conflicts?
I mean, I.
It's not the end of the world. I can approve it tonight, but.
I mean, as long as not too many of us are going to be away if it's school vacation week. I just, I'll be here for February break. I won't be here for April and I'd rather not. Do it by Zoom from.
From wherever you are.
Foreign lands.
I mean, worst case scenario, I'll be in Florida in February and I would love to join by Zoom from the pool area.
Just rub it in.
I move to approve the first half of 2023 select board meeting calendar.
All right. Second. All right. Uh, any further discussion? I would just say if you do come up with some kind of ulterior plan, let us, let us know so we can change it and we don't have to shuffle too many people around when we do do it. Because sometimes it affects planning board or other committees that we bump from the memorial room.
The, the biggest changes here, you have a couple Tuesday meetings that are following Monday holidays. But that's in February, April and June. And then, uh, the, the first two dates in January, normally you do first and third. But because the first Monday in January is actually the recognized holiday for, say, for New Year's, uh, that would have bumped you to Tuesday anyway, and then wouldn't give us terribly a lot of time to prepare coming out of the Christmas holiday. So since there are five Mondays in January, we figured it'd be easier to have them second and fourth that month. It doesn't throw the cadence off too, too much.
And like I told the, the kind of leadership group that met today, that that's my birthday, so I will expect gift cards or presents.
January 9th?
Mm-hmm.
Delightful. We'll have a party.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. All right. New business.
Tim waited around to give you an update on green burials.
Tim Olson. Paging Dr. Olson.
There he is.
Hi, Tim.
I just, hey, how's it going? I just wanted to make sure that I was on just in case anybody had any questions about green burials. I did a little bit of research. I contacted Wenham and went on the DEP website as well. So if anybody has, I'm not sure where that conversation is or, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Um, I guess we haven't had much conversation other than a citizen's suggestion. And I know that Wenham does it. There's a good number of communities that are starting to do it now. Are, are there any holdups on why we wouldn't do it?
Well, what, what I've known is Wenham only allows it in one of their cemeteries and I reached out to their chairman of their cemetery commission. He did not understand why it's only one cemetery. He didn't have enough information for me. I think it might've been before him. But he did give me DEP's website that has some pretty good information and I'll, I'd be happy to share with you. The, the major drawback is, um, if there's any, is their finite DEP said, depending on where your cemetery is buried in close proximity to private wells or water sources. You have high groundwater or hydrological areas, uh, they would, the main concern is obviously bacteria, viruses, microorganisms, things like that, coming from the, uh, a buried body, um, that has not been, um, performed or, or, um, you know, preserved, I guess, uh, with a bombing fluid and things like that. So, um, that's the biggest concern, I guess, is just having the potential for, um, viruses, microbes and bacteria migrating to water sources. I'm not sure if we have any private wells in the local area of Hamilton, but I know we have Miles River right behind it. It is a, kind of everything sheds to the river, uh, in that area. So that's the only concern of mine. Just based on the small amount of info and data that I found. So.
Right. And I, I wonder if, I mean, I guess it takes a lot longer the, for the environment to take a coffin, I guess. But I would assume formaldehyde is a lot more harmful for the environment than just the natural body degrading, but that's my, my two cents or thought there. But thoughts from the board?
Never even thought about it. So interesting.
I mean, I guess I'm for it. I just would want to hear a comment from our department of health and then to see about if there's any restrictions on, like Tim said, as far as wells in the area and if there's any research on leaching of contaminations. I, I can imagine that we probably wouldn't have too many green burials until it becomes a more popular thing. And maybe that we have more of them, but I would say for right now, we probably wouldn't have to have. It's not like they're going to knock down our door tomorrow and just start burying people.
Yeah.
I mean, how many barrels do we do?
With the board of health, that's what the DEP website said.
Yeah.
The board of health actually has to have some type of regulations and a policy, um, type in place.
So this may be a department of health and then a select board issue, most likely.
Right. And then I'm not sure, I mean, operationally, I'm not sure if there's any, on my end, if there's any different techniques or, you know, I think that would be all included in that, uh, policy as well.
Right.
Uh, handling of the, of the remains. Um, you know, we do assist with the, um, ball company. We also assist with the, the, um, mortuaries and things like that. So.
Do you, do you know?
If there's anything more on our end or if there's any procedures that we have to follow or that need to be in place, uh, for that to.
Do we have, do you know offhand, Tim, kind of in a ballpark of burials we do a year? I mean, I'm sure it varies, but there's probably somewhat of an average.
I would say probably, I just off the top of my head, you're probably talking probably about 30 to. I would say probably, just off the top of my head, you're probably talking probably about 30 to 50 maybe.
Okay. Just trying.
It depends. We've had a, you know, I hate to say it, there's been more, more recently over the last couple of years.
All right, so.
Would we need more, or Tim, I got this question for you. I know the person who brought this before and she's very enthusiastic and very willing to like do research or make, make a proposal. Would we need like more specific details? I'm assuming there's a range of green burials, right? There's like, there's the ones where you're like putting them in a essentially cardboard and they grow a tree versus
Right.
Put it in a pine box that disintegrates more slowly. Would it behoove us to come up with like the specific ask or the level of green burial so that we could then do an analysis on what we could do within the cemetery spaces? Like what would be the next step, I guess, is the broad question.
There's a helpful, I just went, I've been searching it, and that the state has a webpage dedicated to green burials and it specifically says, what should local boards of health consider? And gives a whole bunch of criteria, they have a bunch of regulations that you should consider. So, see, I haven't gone through this whole site, there's a ton of information here, but.
I think that's the site that I was referring to.
Okay.
I think everybody, I mean, I, I can spread that around or, or if Tom wants to share it, that's fine. There is a lot on there and I think a lot is, it's not actually, I wouldn't say DPW, it would be more Board of Health and regulations.
Yeah, can we, can I guess maybe, can our board request that the Board of Health look into this?
Yeah.
All right, so anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we move this topic to the purview of our Board of Health to continue the discussion on green burials.
Wonderful.
Second.
Second by Bill, thank you. Any further discussion? No, all right, thank you very much, everyone. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you, Tim, for staying on.
Sure, and I'm here for the other next one, if you have any questions.
Oh, yeah.
It'll go anywhere yet.
Nope. Holiday lights at Patton Park, I think two of the folks that were here tonight and had had enough and left were here for the holiday lights, but we brought up, or I brought up at the last meeting, I think, an email I got from a citizen willing to, to help out or wanted some holiday lights back at Patton Park. And I think we kind of all thought it was a, a nice idea. And I believe our town manager and our DPW director are thinking about doing that and getting some money out of a budget somewhere to do so.
I think I, I spoke to Tim about it after the last meeting. It's definitely operationally something that we can handle, the DPW certainly used to do it. It fell out of favor for a variety of reasons. I guess Tim can clarify a little bit more, but he was just saying to me, you know, I just, you know, how, how much do they really want us to do? Is it just some lights around the gazebo or is the gazebo in the tank? We're a little bit limited at how much we can do down there based on, on the available electricity. So a little bit of clarity from you about how far you want us to go. Or determine whether or not we can live within our current budget appropriation or if I have to look for money somewhere else.
For me, I think that the gazebo would be nice, I don't, I don't think it has to be like the.
What did it used to be? Because they referenced what it used to be, oh.
I, I can't speak for more than 20 some years ago since I've been here, but it's been off and on over the years. There was a few years, years ago, it was more kind of, we'll say denominationally decorated, more Christmasy, stuff like that. And then there was a handful of years where it was holiday, less, less denominational, we'll say. And I think the last iterations of that were well received, but then there was a cup, there was one year where the lights were kind of hapdash on there, to say, you know, kind of thrown up on the roof a little bit in there and then we got some complaints about that and I think they were either corrected and then they just stopped. And then there was another year where they decorated the tank too, but I can't, I don't know if it was the town that decorated the tank or someone else took it upon themselves to decorate the tank, I don't remember. Tim, do you, were you here then?
I think, I think the town did it, but in order for us to do all that, we had extension cords all over the field.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to do that.
So there's power in the gazebo itself? But then the, is there power over underneath the flagpole?
There's.
I don't think there's power to the.
There's power to the light, but there's no outlet there, I don't think, right, Tim?
I don't, no, there's no outlet, there's just hardwired.
No, and then the next outlet's over by the tennis courts.
So, yeah, I mean, I talked with our operations guys, they're fine. They did, they do have concerns about the roof, it's in terrible shape, to be honest. I advise them not to go on the roof. They can, I think what our plan was is to remove the lights that are currently on there from the roof with a bucket truck. We'll have to hire somebody to do that, we don't have one. And then just put up lights around the perimeter of the gazebo and probably down the, you know, the beams or the columns, I guess. Maybe we can do it that way and do everything from the ground and ladders instead of having to get up on the roof there. That roof is in severe need of replacement and it's, it's old wood shingle that is, is deteriorating, so.
So, thoughts?
Well, National Grid's gonna go up, way, way up in price. Seventy percent or something like that they're talking, and you're talking about putting in more lights.
Tim, would we get incandescent or LED?
We'll do LED.
I would say LED.
I would do LED white lights, I think is what I was looking at.
Okay.
I think the LED, the white lights are festive without being, you know, denominational and the LEDs would be less expensive to operate. And our rate is set.
We were in the municipal agreement, so.
We're in a municipal agreement on our rate. The only question would be, would the supply charge from Engrid go up? It, it has, but I don't think for LED lights around the gazebo would be.
For a couple of months are gonna.
To change it soon. What would be the timeframe that they've been running, like for, like during the day, like do they pop on at five? Tim, could we put them on a timer to go on after dark and just be.
Yeah, we'd put them on a timer.
Or something like that? Yeah, so we come on when the site, sun goes down until like 10 or 11 o'clock at night and then go off, so it wouldn't even be all night.
I feel like the, the lighting plan sounds sufficient, I mean.
Do, do you need a diagram?
No, I need, I need nothing further from Tim, I feel like Tim has done a great job, I'm very pleased with Tim, I love his lighting plan. Yeah, I mean, I'm sort of imagining like around, what you said, like around the roof line, the eve of the roof line and then like down the sort of columns or banisters and then more at the entry parts. Feels like it'll look festive. Maybe I'll sneak a giant red bow over there when no one's looking, I don't know.
All right, does everybody think that sounds like a plan? LED lights.
White lights.
Timer, white lights, yeah, I think we all kind of had that thought, white lights.
Yeah.
Timer, perimeter but not up on the roof, whatever is safe for the DPW guys to do and plugging in that outlet there that's, that's already existing.
I think it's a great idea.
Perfect.
Anybody, do we need to make a motion?
Nope, you don't need to make a motion.
We raised an issue and we're filling it.
Addressing it.
We're addressing it.
All right, the only other new business I think that I'll add for tonight before I ask anybody else is Tom's suggestion of some type of a project management tool. Any other new business? Everyone had a good Thanksgiving, I hope they'll spend time with family and be thankful for family and friends.
Our plans were canceled after we ordered the 10-pound pork shoulder, so if anybody wants pork shoulder, please let me know.
I love, I love pork.
10 pounds.
Cooked or uncooked?
Well, the 10 pounds is uncooked, so.
I'll smoke it on my big green egg. All right, anybody want to make a motion to, get out of here?
Motion to adjourn.
Take it.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you, everyone.